Okay, we're going to continue now with our meeting. It was called to order at 6:30. We had a couple of executive sessions to get through. We have one matter that came out of one of the executive sessions and I await a motion on that.
I'll make a motion that the Select Board directs the Town Manager, excuse me, to sign a collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Rockport and Keenster Local Number 340 for the Rockport Police Department to cover the period 2017 to 2020.
Second.
Moved in second and that motion should include the Chair of the Select Board which needs to sign also, but that's the way I heard it.
So, I, one question, didn't, when it says 2020, I assume there's verbiage in there somewhere meaning June 30th, 2020?
Yes, it runs to the back.
In the back. And as soon as we approve this motion, this becomes a public document, so anybody can look at it. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that's a unanimous vote.
The copies are in there to sign.
Just a quick procedural question if I may. Nothing against, he can vote on this even though he wasn't in the executive session?
Uh, that's a good question.
I wouldn't think so, but when it was part of a meeting, you were absent.
Um, yeah, we probably ought to have him, probably ought to have him abstain.
Should we revote?
Um, we can just, Linda can take care of it. So, we'll record that as an abstention.
Sorry. Is that okay?
Under announcements, actually first, let's, we have approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, Monday, July 10th. We have those in our packet. Wait a motion on that.
So, moved.
I have a question. I see it has listed all of us being here, but all the votes are 3-0, so.
Um, I didn't either. Yeah, that's right. There was, uh, Tom and Owen were both missing, I believe.
It says that I was at the meeting, but I in fact was not.
That's a correction we need to make. That's correct, that both Owen and Tom were absent at that meeting. Any other corrections, comments, anything like that? If not, all in favor of the motion with the change? And we have to have, Doug, you going to vote for that?
Yes.
Okay. And we have abstentions for the two.
Right. Keep our hands down.
That's a 3-0.
Scratching our heads.
Okay. Under announcements of upcoming meetings, I'm not going to go through the whole list. They're in the agenda, but I do want to point out that tomorrow we will be having a special Select Board meeting beginning at 4:00 PM to discuss and approve the survey developed by the Portland Research Group for the future of the Rockport Library and that will be streamed. We'll be here at 4:00 PM tomorrow. Other meetings and workshops are on the agenda and we can take a look at those. Do we have any agenda changes that we need to deal with? Seeing none. We'll go to public comment now. Public comment should be directed at issues not under discussion on this evening's agenda. Comment from the public will be welcome prior to each agenda item. Further comment granted by permission of the Board and all public comments should be brief and to the point. Do we have anybody who wishes to make public comment?
Helen Shaw, Rock, Pascal Avenue. I'd like to bring the attention of the new Select Board members an occasional but ongoing dangerous problem, which raised its head again last week when we had both the kitchen tour and an art show on Pascal Avenue. And I speak of the hordes of visitors parking in front of mailboxes and very close to or even hanging over into intersections and driveways. These parkers make it impossible for mail carrier to deliver mail and for residents to get their mail. They block sightlines, making it dangerous to pull out of a street or driveway and on occasion even dangerous to try to turn into a side street or driveway. There's been at least one accident where a driver exiting Ship Street was hit by a car on Pascal and there have been too many near misses to even count. Police have been called on numerous occasions and Mark probably knows all about this over the years, to come and ticket illegally parked cars, but to my knowledge, no tickets have ever been issued. Instead, the business sponsoring the event has been asked to tell their patrons to move their cars and some have. One problem for enforcement is that the yellow lines marking the illegal areas are not regularly freshened up and so people do not know they are illegally parked. And I was assured by Rick this morning that the no parking lines on Pascal will be painted tomorrow, which is very nice, but it doesn't solve the problem we had last week. I'm asking the Select Board to direct the Ordinance Review Committee to draft an ordinance regarding parking on primary streets in Rockport Village, that's Pascal, Main, Center, Russell and Union. I would suggest no parking within 15 feet of an intersection, no parking within 10 feet of a driveway, and no parking within 15 feet of mailboxes, which is the requirement by the post office to ensure delivery of mail and that's the amount of space that Bill and I clear after winter storms. I would also suggest that businesses or anyone that have events which are anticipated to draw large numbers of visitors be required to notify in writing residents of the affected area of the event at least 48 hours in, ahead of that event. The notice to include the name and address of the event sponsor, the date of the event, the starting time and ending time, and a phone number to call for further information. The sponsor of the event should also be required in publicity of the event to remind attendees to observe no parking areas and not to park on residents' lawns. Thank you.
How was your response the other day? I assume you got ahold of Randy or someone and asked them to come over?
A sergeant called me back after we had left for dinner and said he was about to go off duty and he would call in the morning. So, nobody came to look at the problem.
If Rick would take note of that and talk to somebody, because that's not acceptable, I wouldn't think.
In the past, there have been officers have shown up and they have gone into, it's particularly the art gallery that causes the problem and has asked them, you know, to tell their people. But, you know, I'm not an attorney, but it seems to me if the town is aware of the problem and they don't do anything about it, then if somebody does get hit coming out of Ship Street or out of a driveway, then the town could be sued and you certainly don't want that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further public comment?
Mr. Chair, my apologies for not catching an agenda change prior. Can I propose an agenda change?
Sure.
I propose we move item N, which is discussion regarding the purchase of property after item K. And it's just because I see that appears we have quite a few fire folks here and if we could couple the two fire activities together, then that would give them the ability to leave when we're done instead of having to wait through our goals and other things.
Anybody have any problem with that?
Quite reasonable.
Makes sense to me, so, okay, let's do that. Okay, before the Town Manager's Report, we do have a couple of presentations to make. We have some Select Board members emeritai here this evening who served long and well for the town and we'd like to call them forward to receive their due. I have a few gifts for you.
Don't call me Shirley.
Bill Chapman, former Chair of the Select Board, Peter Ralston, which is a wintertime scene. Like they say, you don't deserve the summer if you can't take the winter.
Yeah.
Nine years as a Select Board member and eight years as Chair. Yeah, you got a poster on the back also.
Oh, okay.
And Jeff, also an aficionado of the visual arts. Jeff, six years in this term, but prior to that, how many years before that in time on the, the school board and the zoning board and it's just, the amount of services these two gentlemen have given to the town is unbelievable. And they knew they were coming tonight and they knew they were going to probably have something like this and so were glad to do it, but you're not done yet. You have more.
But wait.
But wait.
But wait, there's more.
This is for Bill and in particular in recognition of his many years as Chair and personally, I have to say that now that I'm sitting in this chair, so to speak, I appreciate so much what he did for an awfully long period of time. So, we have a little special plaque for Bill with a gavel that he used to use and has his dates of service and dates of Chairman and so that's, hopefully will adorn your den at home and you can look at it in your, in your free time. So, thank you very much, Bill. I see there's so much giving you a gavel here either. No, no, I'll speak softly and carry a little stick. And Jeff, we have something for you too. You got a proclamation. So, you're going to have to suffer through this one first.
Where are you telling that? Is this from the state legislature?
No, this is from us, actually. It's better than the state legislature.
It is. No, 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 it totally is.
Okay, this proclamation says, whereas Mr. Jeffrey C. Parker has faithfully served the Town of Rockport for many years as a member of the Select Board, the School Board, the Zoning Board of Appeals and several other municipal committees, and whereas Mr. Parker has been a constant advocate for improved communication between and among citizens, elected officials, appointed board and committee members and professional sound staff, and whereas Mr. Parker has been a leader in developing and advocating for proposals for equipping the Town of Rockport with state-of-the-art tools to aid in communication and community participation in town government and other civic endeavors, and whereas Mr. Parker has provided his professional expertise to help the Town of Rockport choose the best systems possible to accomplish the town's goals of improved communication and inclusivity, and whereas Mr. Parker has donated countless hours of his professional time to aid in installing, improving and maintaining communication systems for the Town of Rockport, most especially in the Rockport Opera House. Here comes a good part. Now, therefore, we, the Rockport Select Board, on behalf of the citizens of the Town of Rockport, do hereby proclaim that from this day forward, the large meeting room on the lower level of the Rockport Opera House shall be known as the Jeffrey C. Parker Community Meeting Room.
And we even spelled your name wrong.
We do have, uh.
You don't get to keep this one, though.
We have to change this one because I spelled your name wrong. But, yeah, we will get it, we will get it fixed.
Upside down one's okay.
But for both of you, you know, for me, five years serving with the both of you has been an honor and your service of the town is, what can I say? I can't say anymore. It's been tremendous. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
And I do want to thank Stacy as well. Stacy helped us as she always did to put all this stuff together and Stacy's, Stacy's genesis for naming the room was part of that too, so, but I think it's entirely appropriate and the rest of the board agreed.
Can we get a picture of you hold, I know it's a laptop.
That would be great.
I only take half of it.
But the, the meeting room sign is really nice.
Yeah, we're, except it's spelled wrong.
It's spelled Jeffrey instead of Jeffrey Parker.
We'll do it like this.
Actually, yeah, bring your, you can lose your left hand.
He's covering up the, he's covering up the.
He's always covering it. One, two, three.
Wait, Jeff, you're looking at.
Okay, I'm looking at Lewis and then I'm going to look at you.
How do you like it being on this side of the camera?
I have a face made for radio.
Jeff was, I've heard that many times, actually, or myself, but Jeff was here on Saturday taking lots of pictures at the Opera House Celebration and continuing to serve the town, so, thank you both very much. We hope you enjoy all this.
I want to say one thing. Have you just sat over there for about, you know, like 10 minutes maybe? Those chairs are far less comfortable than we are. And I know why Rick thinks the ones up here.
The only thing we have different are armrests.
And there will be, there's a copy that for you and there will be a copy that'll be hanging in this room at Infinitum also.
I would like to say about the work that Jeff has done in this room, it's, it's work that largely doesn't get really noticed and it's not really seen, but the ability to livestream the way we livestream and have people be able to interact with the livestream and the level of quality, it's not painful to watch and, and the viewership is growing and I, I think we've only scratched the surface of how important this can be for us as a community, for people to actually engage with town government without having to sit through these tremendously exciting meetings, that they can sit and watch at home and actually interact at home without being called out of order, you know, asked to leave the room. They can actually send in questions and it's, it's an amazing tool and I don't think we've really scratched the surface of how important it is to the community and Jeff put in a ton of time, largely unnoticed by most people.
We noticed.
And my, my two cents between the two of them, I think that if the amount of hours that each of you have donated to the town, is your role as Chair, is your role as Board Member and then all the additional things you do here, if we were to pay you all a professional salary for the amount of hours you put in this town would be broke.
We couldn't afford it.
So, really appreciate all the time that you all put into this, so, thank you.
Thank you both and thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
It's all downhill now.
Now we start yelling.
Town Manager's Report, Rick, you're on.
Wait, Stacy, don't, don't run off yet. Don't run off. I was just, it was going to get at the end, but I'll do it at the beginning. One of the, as part of my Manager's Report, it was towards the end, but Stacy was in a hurry to get out, is unfortunately, we're losing two employees. One, Sue Dates, is retiring after, she's been here since 2005, so she's retiring. As soon as we can find a replacement for her, she will go off to a glorious life of retirement and so she'll be retiring. And also Stacy Para, who has been with us since 2009, 1998. She's bumming because she was working her way up to the top of that.
Try to stay low 20.
Working her way up to that, top of that leaderboard. But, you know, I have to say, it's, it's a mixed, kind of a mixed blessing. You know, I never want to hold back employees. If you have, if you have good employees and they, they're moving on to something that's an improvement and makes the, you know, is better for them, I'm always a person that wants to encourage employees to do that. I'm certainly sorry to see her go. By far, I think I was quoted in the paper, but by far, she's the most talented assistant I've had in 40 years of doing this work. But she's going off to a new challenge and something new and exciting and it will be a whole new world for her and I'm really pleased and have been honored to have worked with her all these, these past four years and thank you, Stacy. There is a, we're planning a celebration, send-off celebration on August 31st from 5:30 to 7:00 PM here at the, at the Opera House. So, that will be, you know, by then hopefully, Stacy's, we're not letting her go, her or Sue go. They're, they're kind of inching their way out the door, but.
He keeps pulling me back in.
Right. So.
Well, and I want to say for Stacy too, from the Select Board perspective, Stacy does an awful lot of work helping keep the Select Board in order and I think the former members that are here would nod their heads also, helping us getting agendas together and just taking care of dotting the i's and crossing the t's, which it seems like there are many i's and t's to be dotted and crossed and so I'm going to miss that and, but I wish you all the best in your, in your new position.
And we'll have something cool for you at your celebration thing.
I expect something especially cool from you.
Okay, to go through the rest of my report, oh, and we have a new employee in assessing and code. It's Hannah Sisk. She started last week, I think, or two weeks ago. So, she's, she's a new face that you'll see when you come in the office that was sitting in Diane, where Diane was sitting, Diane's Chair. The Police Department will be shorthanded in the coming months because of loss of one employee and one of our officers leaving to attend the main Criminal Justice Academy. He's, he's left on Monday, the 14th and he's gone for 18 weeks. Yeah, so he's gone for quite a while. He'll be back, I think, in the, the middle of late December. So, what that means is our officers will be covering a lot of overtime shifts and also the Camden officers will be picking up some overtime shifts to help cover us and make sure we have proper police protection. Also, I don't know if anybody's followed the recent press about the Ford SUVs, the CO2 in Ford SUVs, that I think it was in San Antonio, Texas, that they had, they sidelined all of their SUVs because they were getting high CO2 counts and officers were complaining about getting sick. We, Jason went out and did a test of the SUVs using our current equipment for CO2 detectors and found that we did not have any leaking in the, in the vehicles, but we also installed a CO2 detector in our new, new Cruiser and Camden installed one in their Cruiser as well.
Assuming it's a CO detector.
CO, CO detector, not CO2, yep. Thank you. So, what's CO2 then?
Carbon dioxide. There's lots of that around. Carbon monoxide is the bad stuff.
And do we get to eventually bill out Ford for this?
Well, the, the debate is still going on because Ford is claiming that the reason that they have.
It's aftermarket holes.
It's the aftermarket holes.
Right. There were some civilian versions that had the same problem.
Oh, really had the same problem? Yep. So.
Be part of a class action at some point.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see. But ours, we, we installed the detector in the vehicle so that, you know, an alarm will go off if there is a leak.
You know, the odd, the odd part about that is the sedans and the SUVs, except for the body panels are identical and the only thing they're having problems with are the SUVs.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So, rather, I mean, I think the, the detectors were 120 bucks and so rather than.
Our employee safety is.
Yeah, rather than worry about it, then the alarm will go off if there's a leak. So, the Fire Department has been busy with their usual calls and they get a lot of them. But they, one of the things that they do is the firefighters do a lot of training. It seems like they're always training, doing something and you can see some of the pictures. Do we have them up there? No. Do we?
I don't know who's, who's controlling the.
I think Juniper is.
So, get him up.
She's, she's getting there. Fire Department did, completed a driver training with all, all of the firefighters went through a driver training program a couple of weeks ago and then they also completed the SCBA Confidence Training Course where Jason had built, Jason and the guys had built this obstacle course basically for the firefighters to work their way through while wearing the gear to get them comfortable in those confined spaces. You know, one of the challenges of being a firefighter is that the, you know, fortunately they don't end up having to go to a lot of structure fires because we're, we've gotten such, so good at fire prevention, but it doesn't mean that they don't have to be prepared for that eventual need. And so, they do, they do a lot of training and you can see here where the firefighters are practicing, going through different, you know, tough places that they've developed over a period of, over a period of time. I think it's, it's in the back of the station, correct, Jason? Do you have it?
Yes.
So, there, that's one of the things with the Fire Department is that they do spend a lot of time training. They, they train and train and train for the call that we all hope doesn't come where there's a house fully engaged and that they have to go in to save somebody. But they do, they do train really a lot at all levels. I mean, it, it doesn't seem like there's a week that goes by that I don't get some notification that the Fire Department is doing some training. It seems like every week they're doing some kind of training. The library, they received their, their new virtual reality computer. It will be available at the end, I believe it's this Friday, they're going to start making it available to the public. They had their debut with it, they had their debut with it on Saturday and there was Saturday and there was a line of people waiting to use it. It's pretty impressive. Did you get to try it? I wonder.
I did not. I let my kids do it time and time again and they loved it, except, but the best part was when the whale tail came down. I don't think I saw a kid that didn't go, and an adult, that didn't go, huh, 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 and they all knew it was coming.
Yeah, it, it, you, it actually feel, you can almost feel the whale go by you. It's, it's so real. It has a lot of applications. One of the applications we've talked about is for police training, firefighter training. So, there is applications that may be available as well as just the fun, kind of the fun stuff that you could do. I believe what the plan is, is to get some, some of the virtual reality things of tours of museums and things that people may not get a chance to visit, so you can actually go and by virtual reality, be able to tour the museum and it's, it's pretty amazing how it's, how it all works. I, I don't understand how it works and I'm not even going to ask, but it, it works pretty well. I tried it, I was one of the test dummies, the picture of me didn't make it in earlier in the month and so, and on a side note, I thought was kind of interesting, our Deputy Library Director, Keith Drago, finished in second place at the Rockland Lobster Festival Road Race. Apparently, he's quite the runner. He's training to be in a, run marathons, so he's, we've got quite the runner in, in Keith down at the library, so kind of a different interest. Planning, as you know, we'll be discussing later, but we've had several notices of violations that we've been working through. One is an unsafe building, which I believe is on the agenda for you to set a date for So, and all of these, all of these efforts are working through with legal, with Town Council advising us on the process to make sure we dot all our i's and cross all our t's. Jamie was a, a member of a panel discussion at the Managers Institute just this past week, working with younger employees. He did an excellent job. I was, I was really proud of him. He did a, is he still, is he here or something? Yeah, he did a great job. You know, it was a, an interesting group of people and Jamie moderated that discussion in front of probably 60 or 70 professional city managers and, and did a really, really good job of explaining and helping the managers understand what younger staff are thinking as they're entering the workforce and working their way through the workforce. The Opera, the Opera House Celebration of the 1/25th was just this past weekend. I think it was a success. There was a lot of people there at different events. It was, it was, it was fun stuff to hap, that happened. I particularly liked the, the history of the Opera House was really, the history of town was really good. The history of town as shown in postcards was, was, was really pretty interesting and I, do you have a lot of those postcards, Linda?
I do.
Yep, I'm, I'm sure you probably do too. We've also installed the new railings and there's a picture here of the new railings upstairs. Those new railings are at the bottom of this, of the bottom of the stairs, the stairway coming down the, in the balcony. They need to be there, so if somebody trips coming down the stairs, they don't go over the, go over the edge. I, I haven't really heard any records of anybody that ever happening to, but in order, we, we were under orders from our insurance carrier to make sure that those were there, so we got those done. I think there were 15 or $1,800, was it, to do those? Yeah, as opposed to a few thousand or 5,000 for, for a Lexan one that I don't think would be as sturdy as the ones we have there. The harbor's been very busy this year. We've seen a, a slight uptick in overnight dockage. That's still going on, Abby? Yep. Slight uptick in overnight dockage. We received the donation of a boat rack for kayaks and small boat storage. I think there's a picture further down. The boat rack was built by Seth Parmitar, Parmitar, Parmitar out of scrap metal that was at the highway garage. He took the scrap metal and welded it all together and then covered it with PVC plastic and it's actually, if you, you look at some of the wooden ones, it looks pretty darn nice and it didn't cost us anything. The only thing we bought was the PVC, correct? Yeah, we bought the PVC plastic for the cover. So, it's a, a nice addition because we, we always exceed the number of, we have an exceedance of requests for space than we have actual space to put people on and we make money at, you know, we make money on those rentals of that, of the rack space. We posted the Goody's Beach, Goody's Beach with a no dog sign and have been cleaning up the seaweed that forms along the rack line as recommended by Gartley and Dorsky and that seems to have had some, some impact. As you can see from the printout below, you can see over here on the right-hand side, that's what our tests have been thus far on, in, for this, for this year, historically over from 2009, 10, 11, 12, all the way up to this year. And you can see that the results are, we're getting far better results today. I think, is, is the number 104 is when we have to close? The cutoff is 104. So, you can see the highest we've had this summer is only about 15 or 20 maybe as, for the tests. If you go to the next one, scroll down a little bit more, you go to the next one, you can see, again, you can see how low we are this year compared to last year. I wish we could, I could say. I wish we could, I could say conclusively that we found the smoking gun that, that fixed the problem, and I don't know that we have. I, I can't say that we found it. We've done a lot of small changes that may be affecting it. There's been a lot of things that have happened over the past couple of years that maybe affects any of it, but it, or it may just be a fluke. But I have had, asked Will to come up with a cost of what it would cost us to have him do the initial design work for what it would take us to get the permitting and do the design to put the, run the pipe further out as what was recommended in one of the earlier, earlier recommendations was to push the pipe a few hundred feet out into the, into the water where the drain pipe comes out of the, out of the bulkhead there and move it out. So at a future meeting, you will see, there'll be a cost estimate of what that, that engineering would cost as the first step. And then an estimate of what the total cost of, of that construction would be to just run that pipe out. And it seems like that that may be the next step. We, we can continue to do more science for science sake, or we can take and approach it as trying to fix the problems that we think are contributors to the, to the problem. We did that with the dogs, we're doing that with the seaweed. And, you know, it, it can't hurt to move that drain, drain pipe further, further out. It won't make the problem any worse, and it may help.
We also had the situation on the other side of the harbor where there was a septic system which we found.
Yes.
Was incorrectly installed, and that may be contributing to the improvement, too.
That may be. It will take another year before we'll actually know the results, or a year or two. You know, it could be that it's just been a dry summer. We haven't had any big rainstorms. They contribute to that, we don't know. I mean, we continue to test and we'll continue to monitor. But so far, knock on woods, we haven't had any, even come close to needing to close the beach. So, Summer Street, if you go down to Public, keep going down to Public Works, the curtain drains have been installed. Some pictures, you can see what those are. As you remember, there were, was water that was apparently running down underneath the pavement. And you can see where they've installed these curtain drains, this perforated pipe that runs underneath the road and then catches the water, in theory catches the water, and runs the water through the perforated pipe into the drainage system. So that's, that's been done. We're waiting for them. Do we know, have any idea, Mike, when they're gonna come in and grind that road?
I've not heard a committed date.
They're, they're supposed to come back and grind, and grind the road so that it has the proper slope on it. You can almost see it in the, in the picture on the right, that it actually looks like it's uphill to the curb. And that's where the drainage system is. And so they have to come in and grind that down and then repave it so that it has enough slope. So that the water actually runs from the crown of the road over towards the drainage line that we installed. We spent a lot of money putting that drainage in, and so hopefully that, that, the plan is that that will work, you know. Will, Bill, do you, how many inches do they have to grind off? Do you remember?
They're gonna grind at the edges to be able to transition back and give us the reveal at the curbs and give us a transition at the start and stop of the project, but they've got varying depths. New asphalt that they're gonna pave to create the crown.
Yep.
And those are annotated. George Hall spotted those on the pavement. They're noted in, in paint. Upset seven inches.
Yep.
Last fall, we forced the crown to shape water and drain.
Okay. We've decided to hold off on the wall along the side because the, the price tag on the wall was in the vicinity of sixty thousand dollars. And when we looked at it, it's, it's a lot easier for us to go out a couple of times a year and pick up a few stones that have fallen into the, into the ditch line. And it may find its own level. If it is a problem in the long run, we may have to look at that. But the wall was becoming problematic. The high sidewalk is, has been completed. We were thinking we might do a ribbon cutting this past weekend, but with everything going on, it was decided that we would delay the ribbon cutting. So as soon as we have a date for that, we'll make a formal announcement and invite the board to be there and the press. And the press already left. But.
Linda's still here. Linda's still here.
Oh, there you are, okay. So the pathways committee has been actively, actively looking at, you know, coming up with a plan of how we could get this to do a ribbon cutting and promote it. Because I, I have not, I had one minor complaint about it, but everybody seems to love the new sidewalk. I think it, the railing came out beautiful, a bit better than expected. The plantings will make it look a little, a little more organic. Because it almost, the, the problem is, in my mind, is it's almost too perfect. You know, it's, it's, everything's almost too perfect. So, but it's, it's a beautiful walk. People use, are using it a lot, and, and it's wide enough so people can walk side by side. Mike actually had a nice idea to put a, there's a space up there that looks down over, at the high point, that looks down over the harbor, and there's enough space to put a small bench there. So people can stop and sit in the, at the bench and look down over the harbor, because it's a really, it's a really pretty spot up there. Mount Pleasant Street, the geotech work has all been completed, and the bids went out Friday? The bids all went out on Friday, and we expect construction to begin in early September. The Public Works crew has been up there working periodically, most of this early part of the summer, doing a lot of ditch work and drainage work to try and prep the, prep the road for, for the work. So that, that saves us money.
Geez, I stopped in when they were doing that, and I always forget the name of the machine we bought with the oscillating head. But man, that, because they're able to ditch out, it was impressive how much ditching they did in one day with that little movable head there.
Little excavator?
That's nice.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that, I mean, as you remember, we bought that last year.
Yeah.
And it's far more effective at doing that work than trying to do it with a backhoe. So it's, we're able to do a lot of ditching that, that normally we'd be trying to, you know, do a bad job with the backhoe. This, this goes faster, it does a better job. And, you know, one of the challenges is we have so much work, you know, it seems to be busy all the time. The Ennis Road Bridge, as previously discussed, the Ennis Road Bridge is in tough shape. If you can scroll down a little further. The other way, there you go. Can see the picture. There's a, a large hole that's developed in the bridge, and, and when we did investigations, we found that the bridge is, is not in good shape, the whole bridge. So. Yeah, yeah, that's right. So, the, the, the plan is to remove the bridge deck and replace it with concrete planks. Those planks have been ordered. The process is expected to take, the, the actual construction process is only expected to take a few days, I think. Once the, once the, the planks are here. But it's gonna be a few days that the road is gonna be totally closed. Because the road is so narrow, we can't do, normally if it was a wide enough road, we'd do one half of the road and then the other half. But in this case, it's such a narrow road, we have to close the whole road. So there's about seven or eight houses that are out there. Mike and I were out there last week or the week before. There's about seven or eight house, seven or eight homes in there that will not have access, easy access to their home because that's the only road in there, the only road in and out. We will have a, set up a time to meet with them, with the homeowners, so that we can let them know that this is coming and have a conversation with ways that they can help make it a little bit better for them. And there are, and I, I think most of those homes out there are year-round homes, as, as we, best as we can tell.
All of them are.
All of them are, yep.
And just, if you can shoot me an email when you're gonna have that set up.
Yep, will do. Yeah, you'll be, you'll be helpful in getting us.
Well, I just don't want Skip to rip your head off.
Yeah, it's not, it's not gonna be pleasant. And there's no way, there's no way around it. You know, we, the, the road is too narrow, that we can't, we can't divert it, we can't, there's not a lot we can do there. It's, it's, there's just not, you know, there's no place, there's no place to move the road to. So we're, we're, we're kinda stuck. But the total cost, we think, is between fifty-five and sixty-five thousand dollars. It's an unbudgeted expense. I'm not sure how we're gonna end up the year, but I'm recommending we look at the options of how to pay for it when we, as we get towards April. It may mean that we have that authority to spend money out of the UFB for emergency things like this. I would rather wait and see if we're gonna have to, if we don't have to spend the money out of the UFB and there's enough money in the budget as we get towards the end of the year, that we just cover it out of the budget and leave the UFB untouched. So, we, we don't need to make that decision now. All I'm, just basically letting you know is that that's a possibility. Typically, Mike's budget, because it's one point three million dollars, if he's within a fraction of a percent, that's sixty thousand dollars. So he may have enough money in his budget towards the end of the year to make, to get this, to cover this without having to go to the UFB.
Are you still exploring, if I made, I think we talked about a big metal sheet as, as a possibility, as a stopgap? As we try to.
Fast enough so that we don't have to, because it's not gonna go through the winter, and that would be all said and done, probably about another nine thousand. To put that plate.
That sheet, that plate.
Yep.
Try to just get it fixed and.
So if you go down to Camden Street, I don't know if you noticed, there was a, there was a cone that lived on the end of Camden Street on Route One for, was living there for a few weeks. Mike and the crew finally, he can keep going, Mike and the crew finally were able to get down there and start digging into it. I think it lived there because Mike knew, had in his head, he knew what was underneath there, and he didn't wanna get, dig into it. But basically, it was, it's a similar problem to the problem that we had on, when we did the work on Route One to put the sewer in. That there's a bunch of boulders buried at the edge of the road. And where, particularly right under where Camden Street comes to the, where it connects into Route One, there's all these boulders, and you can see them where they pulled them up, and it left gaps in the, in the soil that was there. And over a period of years, the soil was just going in underneath and filtering through to places unknown. When we dug it up, we found that there were places underneath the pavement, and we kept digging. Voids like this, this far under pavement because the material had gone away someplace. So basically, they ended up tearing up everything, removing all the boulders from half the road, correct, Mike? We got about, we got half of it done? And so we teared up all of the material as, as deep down as we felt it was necessary, and then went back in and replaced it with good material and packed it and rolled it. And has it, hasn't been paved yet?
That, that side's been paved.
That side's been.
Filled with fabric under it, so if something hadn't settled, it should have not run.
Right. So that, we paved that with, but with the idea that we may end up having to do the other side next year. Because it's probably a similar problem on the other side. So we may be simply just chasing the bra, the problem to the other side next year. Because we had fixed it the year before, correct, Mike?
A small spot.
We had fixed a small spot the year before, and then it, it, another hole appeared, three or four feet away from that hole. So, and that, that's, that's a problem we have all along Route One. So one of the reasons we did not, if you continue, you can, you continue scrolling, there's some more photos there. You can see the boulders and the stuff that we're pulling out of there and the gaps underneath the pavement. So it's a, it was a problem there. So if we go to the Rockport Woods, one is, one of the road construction jobs we were working on was Rockport Woods, which is over across from Maritime Farms, that road that goes in there. That road was in very, very bad shape over where the cul-de-sac is, in the area of the cul-de-sac and in the entrance inn. Similar, it was a similar problem. There were a bunch of boulders there, and, and you discovered a lot of clay under one section of it?
Just a few inches of ground, all clay.
And all clay. So they, they had to excavate all of that material and bring in new material before they put down new pavement. Because, you know, we, we could have just shimmed it and put in a new pavement, and we would have had the same problem in another few years. So that, we needed to move off the Camden Street road, project so we could get this done and prepped for pavement. Because once we start paving roads, then it will, this is one of the projects we have to do. So.
When's the ideal time to lay down pavement? Summertime, right?
Paving season.
But for us, as a result of, you know, as a result of the financial analysis, the cash flow analysis that Megan has done, for us, for cash flow, it's better for us to wait until September, when we've been doing it in September, October, because then we have cash coming in. Because that's a chunk of money. It's three hundred and, what do we have for paving budget, three, three hundred? Three twenty?
Hundred and eighty.
Hundred and eighty in the paving? Two, two eighty in the paving budget. So that's a chunk of money going out in a, very quickly. And so, having, having to wait until September is actually a good thing because then tax bills have gone out and money is coming back in. So it allows us to get that work done without having to worry about having enough money in, in cash to get the work done. So. And that's my report.
Okay, anybody have any questions for the manager? Thank you, comprehensive report. Let's move on to unfinished business. Under unfinished business, we have an item to appoint a representative to serve on the Board of the Midcoast Economic Development District. At the last meeting, the board asked me to inquire of our former representative, who was the former board chair. And he was very flattered to be asked, but decided that he liked retirement a little bit better right now, and so he, he's not gonna go on to serve. So I've spoken with Jamie, and I believe that Jamie would be willing to take on that responsibility unless we have a board member here that would like to do it. Some of you got the opportunity to meet Bill Napower last week at our workshop on TIFs and sewer stuff, and realized that he's, he's quite an asset, and he's involved with this organization. So, I don't see any board members jumping to the fore. Jamie, do you wanna, when, when does that group next meet?
Their meeting this week was canceled, so there's another month before it matters. And there's a planning board member that I had reached out to see if he had any interest in that.
Okay. So does the board wanna wait to see if that person would like to see it? Or if we don't have to do it, we could push it to next month? Instead of pushing it to next month, should we just appoint Jamie now until we hear otherwise? I don't know that that gains us anything necessarily. If there's no meeting between now and next month, he would have no duties anyway. So I think if, if this other person is interested, and is a planning board member, that would be a good, probably a good match. So if they're interested, then I think it's probably worth waiting for that. That'd be my opinion, but I defer to the will of the board on that one.
Ken?
Yes. As you know.
In regards to the time commitment, that if you're just a member of McCAD, as a, what they call a general assembly member, you meet once a year in June for a couple of hours to review any of their bylaw changes and other issues that come up, and then to elect the directors. Now, if you're elected a director, then you meet typically four times a year. April and May, and then once or twice else, depending on the, the level of need. If you're on the Board of Directors, you may be elected to the Executive Committee. I was on the Executive Committee. That is the one that typically meets monthly, provided they can get a quorum. Usually, they weren't having any trouble getting that. Sometimes it was the Board of Directors. But Jamie, I don't know, what, you are on there, right, as a general assembly member?
Yeah, they have a vacancy, not only a general assembly, but also an executive board. And whether that's filled by one or two people is really up to us.
Yeah, so that's the range of time commitment, and it depends on what the person that is pointed to that position decides wants to do.
Okay, thank you. Well, I would suggest that we hold off on this till next month and see what Jamie's can bring up for a planning board member. And then we can, next month, we'll definitely have to make a decision on it.
And if that member could come and. Yeah, and if that member could come and talk-
Right, if they're interested. I think Jamie is still determining whether there's interest there or not, so. Okay, so, we'll hold off on that one for now. New business, I'm looking, we already made one agenda change, but I'm looking and seeing a lot of firefighter members out here, and I'm wondering how the rest of the Board would feel about taking those two items, the, the, talking about the fire truck contract and the Tolman property, if we could move those up and do those first. Does that make sense to everybody?
What about, I'm assuming that would take more time than your two-
Two applications for the committee.
They're probably gonna be three or four minutes apiece.
Okay, well, all right, well, let's put it right after the committee applications, then. Does that make sense? And I'd, I'd like to, I don't wanna hold the firefighters here any longer than we have to. Okay. That being said, and moving on to new business, we do have acknowledgment of gifts to the town. We have a gift, an anonymous gift, a thousand dollars for general assistance that we need to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept the generous donation from an anonymous donor in the amount of one thousand dollars for general assistance.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion at all? I know this particular individual donates every year, according to our notes, and it doesn't necessarily seem like a lot of money, but it's an awful lot of money to somebody who's in need, so it's really much appreciated. All in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Okay. And, we also have the scrap metal kayak rack, which we saw pictures of earlier. Do we have a motion on that one?
Move to accept the generous donation of a scrap metal kayak rack to the harbor from Seth Palminter, and to send him a awesome letter of thanks.
Okay, moved and seconded, and we, we saw the story on that one. Any discussion? No, all in favor of that motion? Okay, that motion is approved.
I just love that we're voting to accept something that's already in place.
Well, it's a, it's a legality, okay. We do have some committee applications this evening. We have Bill Kelly, who would like to be on the Opera House Committee. Is Mr. Kelly with, here, would he like to?
I don't think he is.
Mr. Kelly not here tonight?
He's not, and I know we typically try not to approve folks, and I have zero problem if we want to reach out to Mr. Kelly and have him come in and talk. I've had some interactions with him, some folks close to me have had interactions with him when he was doing stuff for the Opera House 125th. Everyone that I've come in contact, that I've had contact with him, speaks highly of him. The bit that I spent with him, I, I think that he, I mean, Linda could probably speak to it as well, he was there serving stuff up at the 125th, he was part of their committee, and so, he would be rolling from Opera House 125th Celebration to Opera House Committee, which seems like a kind of natural progression, but I would defer, if you want him to present himself that-
Well, I'll leave that up to the Board. If somebody wants to make the motion to accept him, then we can discuss it, and-
Make the motion to accept him. To accept William Kelly for the Opera House Committee.
With a term-
Term expiration of June 30th, 2020. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? How do we feel about?
I think we'd already talked about that earlier, whereas people didn't show up, and we had them come at the next meeting. So, if we're gonna keep going back and forth in how we do things, I mean, why don't we just have them come in in September?
Well, I'm trying to, trying to get away from that.
Oh, I know, but I'm just-
Well, there is a little, I mean, the last one we had, I believe, was a Planning Board one, and, and there is a difference in those-
Well, it's still a committee application, regardless of what it is, I guess.
Well, the quasi judicial boards, I feel a little more strongly about personally. I do feel that we need to talk to those folks, but I, I'll leave it up to the Board.
And I'll admit to waffling on it, too, back and forth, reason being, like Ken said, some of our quasi judicial boards, but also, sometimes we get an application, and the bulk of the Board doesn't know who the individual is, and there's actually not even someone other than the recommendation from the Committee Chair to even try to get a feel for this applicant.
No, I-
In a situation where I've spent time with the individual, I feel more comfortable with it, but I agree, we do kinda bounce back and forth.
I know of him, I just think we ought to stick one way or the other.
Do we have a motion, a second?
Yeah, we have the motion and a second right now, so. If, if there's no further discussion, then we can have a vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion to approve the nomination? Any opposed? Okay, we do need to call a roll in that case, so, Mr. Kelly?
No.
Okay, Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Cassas?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Dr. Cole, sorry. And McKinley votes yes. So, that's a four to one vote. Okay. The next one is Mr. Bill Leoni, who is here this evening, I see him, wishes to serve on the Capital Improvement Committee, so if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium and-
Getting grilled.
I've got a mood.
You're here.
Just briefly, if you could tell us what, what you'd like to do on this committee, and why you would like to serve?
Sure. Well, I've had some lifetime experiences in business that I think would help me to bring some, some good decision-making to this committee. I've already had an opportunity to observe at one meeting, and also do some roadwork, where Alan drove us throughout the town, and we looked at a lot of the projects. I was pretty impressed with the detail that's been developed by Megan, I believe, and so, it makes it, you know, pretty straightforward. But, I think I can draw from experiences I've had, I've had a lot of experience with buildings and construction and real estate development. In fact, I still am involved in some of that at this particular point, so hopefully, I can bring some of my experience to the table and, and help the Committee make some decisions that might have some impact on the budget.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Leoni?
I don't have a question for you, sir. It's a general question. How many members do you have on your Board now?
We'll have five.
That'll make the fifth.
Okay, and I was just, I want a good, robust presence of folks there, just making sure you're not, now we got ten members, and no one's gonna agree on anything, but bringing it to five seems good. And hopefully, even more of it done.
I think it has room for three alternates? Three alternates?
Yeah, there are five members, and three alternates as a possibility, should we decide to appoint, so. Any further questions for Mr. Leoni? We have a motion?
Motion to approve the appointment of William Leoni to the Capital Improvement Committee with a term expiration of June 30th, 2018.
Second.
I have the motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Squeaker. Five to nothing. Thank you very much, Bill, for your service. Okay, let's move now to the discussion regarding the request by Mr. Tolman to purchase a portion of the 647 Rockland Street property, and I'll ask our Town Manager to make some brief comments on that.
You have, unfortunately, the map was left out of your packet, the drawing that shows the property in question. Mr. Tolman came to us, it's, since we were looking at the property that we purchased last year, there was some interest by Mr. Tolman in purchasing some of the property that we, that is behind his building. His building is the long, skinny one on that drawing, and, and his lot is, is a very long and skinny lot. In reality, we do not need, the, the, the piece of property that we purchased is the property that's outlined in yellow, and in reality, we do not need all that piece of property. And, so, by beginning to explore the possibility of, of selling the part of the piece of that property that's yellow to Mr. Tolman will, you know, make us some money. Also, it will make Mr. Tolman's land more valuable, in the event that, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years from now, I don't know how long, he's gonna have a glass company there, but if he decides he wants to do something else with that property, now suddenly, that piece of property has some size, and it's on Route 90, and it then maybe is more valuable for future development of some kind. So, this is really, just to start the process with you, to say, is that something you'd like me to explore? We still would have a lot of work to do, to move forward, but at least, before I went too far on this, is that something you would like to explore and, and have me come back at a future meeting with some recommendations of how we could look at that property and-
Okay, before we ask, entertain questions on the Board, I was gonna see if any of the firefighters here wanted to comment on this at all, or have anything to say about it? Okay, no, then, well, Mark?
Go ahead.
Did you own?
So, I'm fine with considering selling some of this property, 'cause that was, from, from my recollection, going into purchasing this property, it seemed like that was the logical thing to do. You purchased the property, you figured out what we're gonna do with West Rockport Fire Station, whatever is remaining over, we sell to the person that it makes sense for them to buy, and it kinda deferred some of the cost of us purchasing the property. The reason that I'm uncomfortable is I'm still waiting for recommendations from the ad hoc committee that we put together and charged with looking over the West Rockport Fire Station, giving us recommendations on how we were gonna expand that bay, and I'm curious, have they been meeting? When are we getting a recommendation from them? Because we, I can't, I can't say, yeah, let's talk about selling it, if we don't know what the plan is for expansion.
To be, to be clear, all you'd be doing at this point is saying, we'd be interested, let's start to think about, you know, how it could work. You're not making a, you wouldn't be making a decision to sell, that would come at a later date.
I still have my other question. Where are we at with that ad hoc committee that we put together and charged, the Select Board charged, with coming up with recommendations for the West Rockport Fire Station?
Chief? Can you come up to the mic?
Come up to the mic, yeah, please.
'Cause I've, I've been waiting with bated breath to hear what the plan is for this, we've got money set aside for it, we, we want this truck to go in there, future expansion, so where are we at?
I've been working with Bill, who's still sitting down, he should've come up with me. Bill has graciously done some design work, I have a copy at the fire station, I dropped it off with Rick last week. We're looking at different options. I think the group has decided that there's no need to do a massive rebuild over there, there's no need to tear everything down and build some station. Looking at the future, what we need, we think that roughly forty-foot addition with a small bump out would suffice. So, that's what, what was that, Bill? The rendering you did was, it's on an overlay map, so-
Do you need a mo- Just-
Yeah, it was on a map with an overlay of the building dimensions, and then a rough boundary, if we were gonna sell, this is where we would sell to, to the right.
I think, I think, Bill, you, you did come up with a, a boundary line adjustment of what, did, did I see that from you?
Yeah.
A lot line adjustment, you know?
I told you.
And, this is all-
Wearing two hats, buddy.
This is all real preliminary work, there's no sense in us going down and looking at a, at, at even considering any kind of sale with Mr. Tolman, if the Board has no interest. If the Board is at least marginally interested, it allows us to continue to talk to Mr. Tolman, and then come back with a, you know, with some kind of proposal. We haven't talked price, we haven't talked conditions, we haven't talked where the line would be. So, I, I think Bill has looked at a lot line adjustment that would work out for both of us as well, for the side lot of the property.
Yeah, we presented at some time remote, some distance past, identified the issue that, because of the way that the existing structure was built, it appears that any addition out the back of the structure would become closer and closer to the side yard, and become more non-conforming. So, a sideline adjustment with Mr. Tolman's property was appropriate to consider any kind of addition on the West Rock Fire, Rockport Fire Station, utilizing the bay that faces Route 90, which is the only sensible bay to utilize. So, there would be some measure to bring forward that would adjust the property line between the town and Mr. Tolman, in the eventuality of putting on an addition. Now, that can be extrapolated into, if it's a successful pursuit for the town's disposition of that property, to make that part of the conveyance, all's well and good, but I think that the, the primary objective would be to make sure that the sideline, we still have the opportunity to effect that sideline change.
A question, with regards to the lot the way it is now, regardless of how you slice it up, it's really useless, building-wise, to anybody other than Mr. Tolman, I think, isn't it?
I wouldn't commit, I don't know what anybody could envision, there is frontage along-
Well, I'm just wondering whether the lot size would be big enough to put something from the 90 back to the stream, or, I mean-
Right, I've not made an assessment to, to tell you definitively, one way or the other.
Perhaps not on its own, but maybe combined with another parcel at Mike's-
Yeah, also, I mean, if it was something that already ordered his, it would be-
So, it seems to me that what, what the sense that I'm getting from the Board is that, you know, we probably would like Rick to continue to explore this in tandem with, you know, knowing what's going on with, with the possible development of, of the fire station also, and, and Rick is absolutely right, we're not gonna act on anything until we have a fairly robust plan in front of us that tells us, you know, where the fire station's gonna expand, and, and how the, the change in the property might affect that.
Can I ask what you, as a Board, would like to get from the Committee at this point, so we can get together one more time?
I've been waiting on a recommendation since we charged you all with it, and I'm a little concerned, is, is the, is the Committee finding it difficult to get time to meet together? 'Cause, I mean, from my assessment, anyway, we've got money sitting there for this, we've got potential revenue sitting there for this, and-
I guess as a minimum, I'd like to just see a boundary line, you know, so then we would know what's left over that we could work with Mr. Tolman about.
And Tom, you had-
So, it goes two ways. We've looked at, again, a variety of different options. What we've come up with is, again, a roughly a forty-foot addition. The question is, is the funding for it? We have one hundred and twenty-five thousand, but from what I've been told, that's only gonna fix a portion of it. So, the question is, do we use that one hundred and twenty-five thousand and just do a partial fix that still doesn't accommodate the second truck or the full depth? Or, do we wait and do the full addition at once? I, I'm not in charge of the funding or giving the approval to even ask for the funding, so, we, we have a rough design of what we'd like, but I've been told that the funding is not there for the total project right now.
You know, I think we're getting off topic here. Again, if you look at the map, you know, you can envision what they may want for the West Rockport, and there's gotta be quite a bit left over, and the question here is, do we want Rick to talk to Nelson about what to do with this property over here?
And I, I don't disagree with you. My frustration, for lack of a better word, is we've got the bulk of the money sitting there to do this, it's public safety, we've had-
Yeah, but that's not, that's not what the agenda item is right now.
Tom had his hand up a while ago, I wanna see what Tom has.
My question was essentially answered in the interchange between Owen and-
Okay, okay.
I understand what you're saying, Owen.
It's been, we've, we've been discussing this for a long time, and all of a sudden, it's coming back, and it's like, yeah, what the hell are we doing with West Rockport Fire Station?
Not as long as the library, though.
Well, let's-
Always look at the right side.
Less controversial topic.
Let's get back to the, to the motion, and, I mean, do we, as a Board, want Rick to, to continue to explore this?
Yes.
Okay, I think that's a pretty resounding yes, and I think we can move on.
But, at the same time, can we, and I know it's not part of the agenda item, but I, I would really like to encourage the Committee to come to this Board with a recommendation, and if your recommendation happens to be higher than the money we have, my recollection is, because that money was part of the overall bond, and we were under budget on some projects, we can shift money to fill that funding gap.
We've already shifted some to get to the eight, to the one hundred and twenty-five.
Do we have more that we can shift?
Not at this point, probably not.
Well, I think a future agenda item would be, a, a report from the Committee would be good with options. Maybe not a, maybe they're not to the recommendation stage yet, but options, I think, would be a good next step.
That would be great.
Do we say future, as in next month? Because Rick's already got some of the material.
Can you, can you do that? Is that too fast for you?
We can have you absolutely next month, we'll have something for you.
That'll be good.
Yep.
Good.
Great.
Okay.
Don't break out the shovel, Nelson. I've already warned him, this is gonna be a, not an easy process.
But, we're talking about it, and that's a good thing, okay. Next item, then, would be the approval to allow the Town Manager to sign the contract with Greenwood Emergency Vehicles for a new fire truck. And, we have a lot of information on this in our packet, this is a process that's been going on for an awfully long time. This is a process that's been going on for an awfully long time, dealing with the, both the reserve account deposits that have been made, and, and the work that's been done into the research. We authorized at a prior meeting a couple of months ago, I believe, to authorize the, the town to sign a contract with this organization so that we could lock in the price and save a fair amount of money, actually, by doing that.
About fifty, fifty thousand, is it, Jason?
Thirty.
Thirty, thirty to thirty-five thousand?
And so now we're at the point where we have to sign the contract. Have I summarized that properly? Okay. Does anybody have any questions on this item?
I do, and I don't know who the best person would be to answer it. I don't know if it's Megan or Jason, but can someone just walk us through the schedule, and why this schedule makes absolute sense, and why we're, we're scheduling out on the way? Because it says Ginny came up with it, so that's why I brought Megan's name up.
Yep.
Where's my? You can pass those down.
So, I apologize for my lack of understanding when this was first set up, but from what I gather is our fire truck replacement had fallen behind. And in order to catch up to a logical schedule, we had to replace two fire trucks within a five-year period, essentially. So what was designed or developed was to do annual deposits to a reserve account to offset the cost of a lease purchase payment for the new vehicles. So that when we had to make the payments, we weren't seeing large increases in our budget. So this purchase for the contract that you're either gonna authorize or not for Rick to sign is the second truck down in the first box. So it's fire truck number twenty-three as well will be replaced. By signing the contract now, we're saving the thirty to thirty-five thousand, which will reduce our cost sum. And then these lease payments are based on the high side, because as you can see, the interest rate's based on four to, four point two-five percent, which is about a percentage point higher than what our last two lease purchases have been. So my estimates are that this will actually be less than what we have anticipated. And in the bottom part, where you see the purple in that box, those are annual deposits to the reserve account to offset the payments that are being made out of that account.
And also to fund future purchases, the reserve account also. And I would point out, it says on your list here, and we've talked about this before, that this truck will replace two current trucks. So two trucks will be taken out of service, is that correct?
There's been some conversation around that. With West Rockport Fire Station, the way that it is now, none of the other trucks fit in that station. So with West Rockport only having one truck over there, that would not leave them a backup. So it would be beneficial to the town and our ISO ratings to leave the twenty-five over there and just replace the one truck.
Ooh, and then I don't know who wants to speak, maybe the chief, but the ISO rating.
It impacts your homeowner's insurance.
Me as a private resident in the town of Rockport?
Yep.
So I realize a cost saving on my homeowner's insurance, because we've got two stations with trucks in them.
Yes, and that's because of our square miles. And we're going through an ISO rating review next month.
Oh.
September seventh.
Every ten years.
Okay. Uh, does anybody have any further questions on this?
What's the current ISO rating? So we'll know what the new one is.
Megan, do you know?
I have no idea.
Stacy's already gone. She was the one that did the last one. I believe we're a seven, six or a seven, one of the two, I don't know which number. I thought it was a seven.
What's the top out at?
Ten.
That's good, though.
Yep.
Okay, I await a motion if there's no further discussion.
I move, if I can find the cheat sheet, I move to approve the request from the town manager and the fire chief to order the new E-one Typhoon pumper truck, pumper fire truck, in the amount of eight hun, five hundred and eighty-four thousand. I just switched them. Five hundred and eighty-four thousand, the extra three hundred thousands for me. Two hundred and twenty-seven dollars from Greenwood Emergency Vehicles Incorporated for delivery on or about July first, July fifteenth of twenty eighteen.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion? Any opposed? No, five to nothing, that's a unanimous vote. Thank you. Okay.
Now, where are we on the agenda?
Yeah, so now we're gonna pop back up and talk about establishing the ad hoc comprehensive plan review committee. Which is item E.
Did he give his presentation?
Oh, did I miss? Yeah, yeah. No, that's, that's next, okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, yep. We talked about this, Jamie presented to us last time about the process of, of refreshing the comprehensive plan, for lack of a better term, and the first step in that would be putting together what Jamie called a comprehensive plan review committee to do the first year's work of looking through the current comprehensive plan, determining what things need action, what things could receive action before the comprehensive plan is, is renewed, and then setting a path toward renewing a new one. So for this evening, and, and we've already had some significant interest on this committee, in fact, we already have some applications for it. So what this board needs to do this evening is to decide, basically, how big the committee needs to be, and to think about a charge for the committee, although I would suggest that the charge, as Jamie's first year schedule that he outlined for us, would, would be an adequate charge for that committee.
Well, I'd make a motion to move to vote to establish an ad hoc comprehensive plan review committee made up of seven to nine members, and to ask interested residents to submit an application by September first. When's the first meeting in September?
September eleventh.
For consideration at the September eleventh meeting of the select board.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll wait until.
Second.
Okay.
Discussion purposes.
So we have a motion and a second, discussion then?
Do we ever appoint a committee to have a range of members, or do we appoint it with a fine amount with alternates?
I'll amend my motion to say nine.
Okay.
How many were on the one before?
Well, the, you have to be careful, because the one, this is not, this is not necessarily the committee that's gonna write. The committee that's gonna write it is gonna be much larger. The review committee, I would, my thought on that would be nine would be the absolute maximum, and, and seven might be better, I don't know, but. I, I actually think the range is okay, because I think it's, we'll see what we get for applications. So I, your second wasn't, your second wasn't amended, so the motion still stands at seven to nine. I think that's okay. We've had some significant interest so far. We've had, and, and I know, I know one member of the audience is gonna be putting in an application sometime soon, so. So I think it's okay to have the seven to nine. The only suggestion I would make on the motion is thinking about the Labor Day holiday, maybe making the application in on the, due on that Tuesday after Labor Day, which I don't know what the date is, I think it's the fifth, the fifth or something, and that, would that give us enough time to get them together in time for the, for the meeting on the eleventh? So I would suggest that, and see how the rest of the board feels about that.
Do we, knowing that this is not the be-all, end-all board, do we wanna consider alternates? Or with a range, do you feel that that's?
I think I'd leave it as the range for now. And also, it's an ad hoc committee, so it's only, this committee will likely work for one year. And then at the end of one year, according to what Jamie said, and, and the way I understand that the process could work, is that some members of that committee may decide that, okay, they've done their work, and they're gonna go on. Some may decide they wanna stay with it for another year and actually work on the drafting phase, and then maybe new people that come in for the drafting phase as well. And that, that group is likely to be larger, because it does require a lot of subcommittees and a lot of work.
And what did you have for a due date?
Nine, five.
Doug's motion was September first, I was, I suggest that we pick the Tuesday after Labor Day to allow people to think about it over the holiday weekend, and then, and then for consideration, September eleventh. You seconded the motion, are you okay with the?
I did not second the motion.
Who seconded it? You did?
Yeah, I'm good with it, makes sense.
Okay. So the motion as it stands is to establish a committee made up of seven to nine members, applications by September fifth for consideration of the September eleventh meeting of the select board. Any further discussion on the motion?
Are we gonna do anything different about how we advertise any of this, considering the weight of this? I know that there's already folks that are interested, and that's awesome, and I'll try to do my part on the Facebook and whatever, but is there a way of really trying to, can we ramp up advertising beyond what we typically do? It's a compress timeframe that we've given applicants.
It's usually through the press, the press is here.
I think that's a press release.
Yeah.
Two, right. Two of the previous people are being approached, one of which said that they would do it if the other one did, so we're, we're working on getting two prior members.
And we have, I think, we have, I can think probably of four that we have already that are, that are strongly interested.
Are you referring to the two thousand and four?
The original.
The original, that would be nice, that would be really interesting.
Yep.
Yeah, you need some historical representation.
Okay, so is everybody, everybody clear on the motion? Okay, any further discussion?
I do this all the time, sorry, because I'm, I'm a constant. Jamie, on your memo, there were a couple of things that I underlined, and not that this necessarily applies to this first group that we're putting together, but in the one, two, third paragraph, it says, "As a professional planner, I would also hope and expect to provide the town with an opportunity to revisit the significance of the Harbor Village in the community." Why was that, why was that isolated out specifically of all the different villages that we have? Why was that one identified?
That came to mind through a lot of the participation. You guessed it, on the library, and several people, including Linda over there, made the observation that these are com-plan questions from two thousand and four that were really unresolved, resulting in this difficult to, I won't say endless, it's a debate that has been very difficult to resolve. And I think that the, as a relative newcomer to the community, it's been pretty clear that there's a lot of tension around, if you wanna be a downtown and absorb some of these community assets like a magnet somehow, there's some other things that you have to deliver to the community, to make sure that the downtown, that everyone has a piece of it, whether that's additional retail and not just businesses that are perceived as for an, an elite group, or, well, and commercial zoning, which we've already made a change to. So there's a give and take that I think that comes with having a downtown that is an open debate in Rockport.
Cool. Another question I had in the last paragraph, resulting in the attached preliminary cost estimates, maybe I overlooked the cost estimates? I think you were referring specifically to bringing on some professionals nearing the ending of this process.
Yeah, this is a kind of a greatest hits. You're looking at July's memo, to which I did attach all that, and we thought, why distract the select board again with all that stuff this month, and now I regret it.
Be in your July packet, and.
Gotcha.
That does come in with, with next July, and the opportunity to have a kind of punctuated break between review committee and drafting. A lot of it has to do with handing off some of the work, and we'll figure out exactly how much sweat equity is appropriate to that outside consultant, the executive director of the Midcoast Regional Planning Commission.
I would point out that the last time around, we had mostly Rockport residents did the lion's share of the work on it, and it was a very good product, and we may be able to do that again. I don't, I think there's some value in having another set of eyes take a look at it, that's.
The very minimum scope that, that she would take would be ferrying drafts back and forth to appropriate state agencies and getting their feedback, and just making sure that that had, you know, a, a person associated with that task.
Right.
And.
But that's the second part of the.
What you're talking about is something that's a year away.
That's right, that's the second part, it doesn't really have anything to do with this particular committee at this point, although this committee will, will lay the groundwork for it, but that's, that part of the process is later on.
Last question. What is the date for our second meeting in September? The one that we don't necessarily have to have?
The twenty-fifth. Which we will be having, actually, at least partially for some other things, probably.
Good. Is it gonna be a substantial alteration to this timeline to give applicants for this committee, instead of having it be on the fifth? Can we, can we at least give them over a month? Because we're on the, what day is today, the fourteenth or something?
Yeah.
I just, if we're not, I mean.
Yep.
Does that make sense?
If we can do that.
Yeah, there's no.
Less than a month?
Ticking clock here. I mean, we have, we do have time. I would, I would agree with that. I think, you know, to get it out and really push, to get a good stable of people that are interested.
Get some good quality applicants, try to really publicize it, and if we're already gonna meet later in September, then it's really not an unreasonable burden on, on any of us. Does that require amending of the, of?
Well, the motion has the date of it right now, so. No, we haven't voted on the motion yet, the motion's still on.
Doctor, are you open to amending your motion?
Yeah, I mean, it's really only a two-week difference, or, again, I don't think that's a significant timeframe. I'm trying to stick to, to Jamie's schedule, but that would still be in September, so I'd be happy to. Move it to, at the September twenty-fifth meeting.
I'd certainly withdraw my second. And, so if we, what do we want to put for the deadline for the applications?
Well.
Push that two weeks ahead also?
Yeah, so from the fifth to the.
Well, you could even make it three weeks, because we could still get them on the agenda. So the eighteenth?
I don't know where that is, what kind of a day is that?
I don't actually have a thing. Well, that's, must be a Monday if it's a week.
Sixteenth would be a Friday.
Yeah, the, yeah, the eighteenth would be Monday, that's right, yeah, so, so deadline on the eighteenth, and for the meeting on the twenty-fifth?
Yep.
Yeah.
Everybody agreed with that, so we changed the motion again, Linda?
Thank you.
Is everybody?
Somebody withdrew their motion and redid it.
Everybody withdrew it and everybody redid it, yeah.
Right.
I heard it.
And so did the camera.
Okay. Are we ready to vote on this?
Please.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. That's a good one. Okay. Now, we have our intern, Peter Huntington, and we apologize for the wrong name being in the, in the agenda, who has been working with the town for the summer, and, and I don't, do, do you wanna introduce him, Rick, or?
I'll get his name wrong.
Yeah, go ahead, Rick.
I'll get him, his name wrong. I, I'm not to blame for the name, because I just put question marks, because I have trouble with everybody's names these days, and I, I just said Peter, question mark, last name, and so somehow it got filled in as Nelson. I think Stacy said she was working on it, she was working on the Nelson Tolman thing. She has a friend, his name is Peter Nelson, and it just became, he's Peter Nelson?
No problem.
He's a pretty easygoing guy, so.
He corrected it here.
We're all good. So, hi, everyone, my name is Peter Huntington. I have been an intern with the Department of Public Works this summer. It's a, through a program run out of the Margaret Chaysmith Policy Center at the University of Maine. Every summer, they partner students in Maine or from Maine with usually state departments, agencies, or offices. I was one of the few interns this year placed with a municipal department. I go to school at the University of Massachusetts Amherst, I'm doing a master's in geography there, and this summer, I had the great fortune and pleasure of working with the DPW here, and doing a, an assessment of culverts primarily across the town. So I created this presentation, and I'll try to be very quick going through it. I recognize you guys have a lot of business to do, and it's late on a Monday night, so I'll go through. If you have questions at all throughout, please feel free to ask them. This work is near and dear to my heart, so let's begin.
First question.
Sure.
Are we gonna have access to this digitally?
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'll get into that, the storage of this information, and this presentation is available as well, too, so if people want that.
So, to be, to be clear, though, the work he did was much more than, than culverts. He did a, a total road analysis, road condition analysis of, of every road in town, all the pavement conditions and all that. He also did culverts, and I don't know how far you got on streetlights.
Yeah, so.
I mean, I don't wanna, but you did a lot of work, but you, you. I mean, I don't wanna, but you did a lot of work, but you, your presentation here is on the culvert stuff, is?
Uh, the primary share of the presentation is on the culverts, uh, it's what I spent most of my time doing, uh, this summer. But I do also have, um, assessed and with some supplementary information on all the road surface, um, across town. So I did an assessment of road surfaces, on the condition of those, I also mapped, uh, streetlights and storm drains in town and, um. Yeah, I think that's it. Um, so I'll, I'll get to that and how the, how the information is stored and accessible, uh, as we go along. So first off, uh, in case people don't know, what is a culvert? Um, there's actually a, a Maine State Highway law that defines what a culvert is. It's any pipe that conveys water, uh, that spans, um, less than ten feet. Um, there are culverts that are, that are longer than ten feet, um, so, um, I might actually take issue with their technical definition. Uh, but basically a culvert, um, flows water, um, under roads or under, under driveways. So, uh, they're made out of different, different materials, primarily either, uh, aluminized steel or plastic. And, uh, they're really critical pieces of infrastructure, they're easy to forget about because oftentimes they're hidden, uh, more or less invisible to drivers or pedestrians. Uh, but these are essentially pipes, um, underneath driveways and roads, uh, that move water. And I say they're critical because, uh, in the event of an extreme storm with a lot of precipitation or, um, uh, meltwaters in the spring, uh, there's the potential to block or clog or overrun culverts, which can have really, really, um, devastating consequences for communities. Um, especially, uh, looking at the potential to, um, take out transportation, uh, flows and, um, cause headaches for towns. So, this summer, uh, my methods included, um, going out with the GPS unit to mark locations, um, measuring tools to, um, identify the specs of culverts. I took photos, photo documented each, each culvert for, um, record keeping purposes. I was speaking with the, uh, member of the Knox County Emergency Management Agency and they made it clear to me just how important it is to have photographic sort of proof, um, that culverts exist and the conditions that they're in, in the, you know, um, hopefully, um, never to be experienced event of some storm that would take out the infrastructure. It's just easier to get, um, state and federal funding, uh, for replacements when you have photo proof. So, um, that's why I was taking photos all over town this summer. Um, also, I used a laptop with a, a mapping software and, um, a, um, a software system designed by the state to do the road surface. And, uh, I'll talk about, I'll talk about that more later in the presentation. Let's begin with some results, looking at the culverts. So, uh, just, uh, one graph to show you kind of overall the perspective on culverts. Um, this is showing the percentages of the culverts by different condition categories. So I, uh, broke down culvert conditions into three categories, good, fair and unknown. Or, sorry, good, fair and poor. Uh, and there are, um, very few culverts that are, uh, labeled as unknown. Um, basically that was because of just inaccessibility to the culvert. Uh, some of these lie on private property, uh, where it's difficult to get access to see the ending for, to sort of assess the condition. And some of these are so well and truly buried underground and, um, debris that it's difficult to, to see. So, uh, as you can see, the majority of the culverts out there, of which there's, I believe it's seven hundred and twenty-four culverts across, um, all of the, about sixty-five miles of town roadways. So these are public roads that belong to Rockport, uh, not counting private roads and state roads. So, uh, the majority of them are in, are in fair shape, which is really good. Uh, and just so you know, uh, culvert condition, uh, is broken down into this sort of like average lifespan fifteen-year timeline where a good culvert would be a culvert that had just been recently replaced, uh, or put in that looks like it's within the first one to three years of its life. A fair culvert is anything, uh, that looks like it's been there for over three years, uh, but doesn't reach the mark of poor, which is basically a culvert that either needs repair or is in seemingly the, the final three years of its life. So with those, you see a lot of kind of, um, decay, um, rust, um, uh, damage to the, to the pipe material, which, uh, can both cause debris but also hinder its ability to, to move water.
Quick question.
Sure.
Does, what surrounds the culvert itself play into your classification? Meaning, like a culvert could have a bunch of stuff piled up on one end that blocks it up, but the culvert itself is in good condition, but that area surrounding it's not a fully functioning culvert?
Yeah, that's a really good point, um, so, these conditions are structural.
Okay.
Um, when there was, when there are cases of, uh, debris blockage, that's actually a, an additional comment that I put under each culvert, um, that featured that. So there's, there's sort of separate mapping of those factors as well. Uh, culverts by type, so the majority of culverts are driveway culverts. Uh, Rockport has a lot of, um, houses developed across the town. So, uh, for every driveway, there has to be at least one culvert, um, generally. Um, uh, the other large share of culverts are cross culverts, cross being they cross a roadway. And also, a, a smaller fraction are these field entrances. And so a field entrance would be whenever there's not a, a house or residence or a business, um, on the other end of the culvert. So, these are a set of three maps that, um, I can walk through individually, but just to show you, um, I created maps that show, uh, culverts with debris blockage. So this is where I identified culvert, culverts with, um, uh, you know, some type of material, um, blocking one or both ends of the, of the culvert. And so, um, that's on the left, in the middle we have culverts in, in poor condition, so structurally poor condition. And then on the far right, we have what I call culverts in critical condition, which would be a culvert that, that is showing both, uh, poor condition with debris blockage. And so that might be, um, a map showing kind of prioritization of culverts that need, um, need attention. So, maybe just for a better visual, they're up close here, um.
What is going on a beach hill?
Yeah, oh, whoa, whoa, sorry. Yeah, um, I suspect, you know, part of the problem might be slope and I have not created maps that show the, uh, the topography of Rockport, I can create that if that would be useful. But I think a lot of the time when we see culverts with, um, generally poor condition or debris blockage, there's, um, a case of like really excessive slope. Uh, now to sort of segue into, um, some of the other work I did this summer, I, uh, assessed road surfaces across town. So, just so you know, uh, Maine State Highway has developed a, uh, management system. They, they created a software system called RSMS Road Service Management System. And, um, basically, uh, my method was to go around town with this form you can see on the right of the screen, uh, looking at different factors that affect road, road surfaces. And so these could be anything from cracking to potholes, there's numerous kinds of cracking, um, for road surfaces. I learned a lot about how to assess road surfaces this summer. Uh, roughness is certainly, um, a factor. And so, you can see on the left, uh, there's some images, um, of road surfaces in town. Uh, some examples of the cracking, alligator cracking, edge cracking, lat longitude cracking. On the left photo and in the middle, um, photo to the right, we have an example of a, of a drainage issue. And so, it was a little bit difficult this summer to assess drainage issues because, uh, with so little rain, it's kind of hard to identify them. But, uh, when I did see cases of drainage issues or other, um, major road obstacles, I would, uh, photo document and put it in the notes of this system, which looks like this on the computer. So, uh, it might be difficult to see at this scale, but, um, every town road is, um, has their own, um, set of this, of the survey, uh, filled in. And so this data can be changed over time, it can be used to generate reports to show kind of prioritization of roads, um, in different states of repair. And, uh, also the state has designed, has built in kind of estimates for cost. And so, uh, this RSMS software could be used to, um, sort of prioritize and visualize how to, how to allocate road surface budgeting. Um, and this is what an individual road, uh, kind of file looks like in the software. So you can see, um, in the bottom half of the screen, the survey data, that's where I would put in, um, my evaluations for the different distresses, and there's other information regarding specs, uh, for the roads. So, um, looking at storm drains, I also mapped, uh, where the openings are. There's one hundred and sixty-five storm drain openings in Rockport. Um, they're mostly located in the, in the Harbor Village area. And, um, uh, yeah, good to know where those are. Also, uh, the last thing I mapped this summer was, uh, the locations of streetlights. Um, and I looked at streetlights all over town, uh, so both state and town roads. Uh, there's, I came up with a total of two hundred and eighty-four streetlights.
Is that guy with you?
The vast majority of these are attached to telephone poles and, um.
Can we just pause you real, real quick on this one? How's that match up with your fellows' numbers?
I, I think.
We've been dealing with lights and CMP and are we getting billed for the amount of streetlights that we have?
I think originally it was like two twenty-something and I think Rick came in about five off of that.
Right, but I thi, I thought the number we've been paying for was two, in the two eighties. Yeah, that's the number we've been paying for, it was in the two eighties. But one of the challenges was getting an actual location on a map.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, Peter's done that and, um.
Now, if we can just get CMP to change the name of the roads.
Right, but we'll, we'll know exactly where they are.
You didn't, you didn't take pictures of all two hundred and eighty-four, did you?
No, I didn't, no, I didn't take any of those, the streetlights, I was thinking I should just for showing you on here because the majority of them are sort of this standard, like, overhanging off of a telephone pole, I don't know, it looks like a light bulb, um.
But just having him mark them out.
Yeah, that's.
And, uh, for, for somebody to go back and gather further data, th, there's, now there's a record created for that and adding the data in is, is, i, is, uh, easier because it's, the, the record has been correct, it created.
How many of them worked?
He was down during the day.
He went during the daytime.
Yeah.
So this is incomplete.
Yeah, they all worked during the day.
They were all off.
So, in summary, um, this data is stored in multiple formats. So, um, there are computer databases that can, that can be gone into to reference the information, to, um, query it or to analyze it in a variety of ways. Um, but I'm also going to, um, print out, uh, sort of hard copy versions to give to, um, the Department of Public Works and also the Town Office to have for reference, if, just maybe for ease of use if it's easier to have a paper copy to flip through out in the field or at a moment's notice. Um, so, all this information will be sort of expanded upon in some type of final report and, um, a, a binder probably showing each culvert and the, the rel, the relevant information regarding the specs and the condition and sets of maps to show where those culverts are.
Is Mike, Mike, is your computer system savvy enough to handle this? So you're, you're up to speed with, good?
Yeah, I'm using a, a town laptop, all town, um, hardware, software. And I'll also leave sort of an introduction, um, to this report and a sort of an explanation for how to go into these systems to, to, like, view the data and to, you know, use its functionality as well.
But if we were to add something, we wouldn't necessarily be reaching out to Public Works to manipulate it. If we added X, Y, and Z, we'd reach out to Letitia and someone who's more GIS, not that your folks aren't GIS savvy, but.
She would help us.
If we're using it to justify certain things, I'd like someone who's gone to school for it or, or knows how to do that stuff. But it's all manipulatable after the fact?
Yes, absolutely, this all, it's, you know, it's not a document, but it's a living kind of database that can be gone into, um, changed, modified, added to, um, analyzed.
Cool.
One of the things is, um, I believe his la, uh, Peter's last day is Friday as far as his internship goes. But we've, I've been, I've talked to Peter about the possibility of, of having him s, continue to work on some stuff for us that, that'll help transition us and make the data more useful. Cause right now what he's done is he's created all the records. And then now we have to move it to the next level of how do we work with the records? How do we make it so that, that the Public Works guys can, can at least create a piece of paper that allows a record to be modified? Because it, the, all this work will be of no value if it's not a, a, adjusted and kept up on.
A living document.
Right, so, um, the goal is that, um, you know, Peter will help us, uh, to some extent over the, over the next several months, um, working on that. Um, also, he's, he's wor, what, what's your, your master's project?
Yeah, so, um, I am really interested in carrying this project over to my, my academic life. Um, I'm going into my final semester at school, uh, this fall and I'm looking for a research project in order to graduate. So, uh, I'm really interested in climate change and the effects of, um, um, both experienced effects of, you know, climate change, mostly in the northeast, we have, uh, increased rains and periods of drought, extreme weather, et cetera. So I'm really interested in, um, doing a potential study of Rockport's culverts in, in the light of, um, projected, uh, weather events and precipitation ranges, um, looking into the future. People have already done, um, interesting estimates of what we can expect in terms of rainfall, for example, in the future. So one thing that I'm interested in, in personally and academically is, um, a study that would look at the exi, the existing culverts and their design, um, and the terrain and coupling that with these projected kind of rainfall, um, estimates. And from that, one could tell, you know, how many culverts are at risk, where are they? Uh, what would it take in order to, um, have, you know, culverts that are totally capable of handling what's expected in terms of, um, future rainfall amounts? I would, you know, as a student, that being a research project, I would do that just out of interest. Uh, but I'm perfectly interested and, and capable of, um, you know, working further with this data. Uh, once I'm at school, I can work remotely perhaps, um, but in whatever way that would be beneficial to the town.
You, you may not know anything about this, you actually look pretty young, so maybe you don't. But, um, a few years back, a hurricane went up through Vermont.
Tropical Storm Irene, yeah.
Yeah, caused a lot of damage. And in the analysis of that, did they ever determine, you know, were the culverts inadequate? Or were they at poor condition or was it all the above?
Getting ready for this one.
So, I actually spent a year working on a research project that looked, um, mainly at the effects of Tropical Storm Irene in Vermont and Massachusetts. And, uh, we actually identified culverts as one of the sort of like primary, um, culprits, um, of a lot of the flooding. Both flooding but also damage because, um, water can, can cause damage flooding, but it can also erode, uh, roadways, properties, et cetera, without ever causing a flooding issue. So, yes, in short, we did find culverts to be, uh, a critical piece of infrastructure that most towns don't know how many they have or, or where they are or in what shape they are. So, no, you do. And, um, there's actually quite a bit of literature that go, that goes into culverts and, um, principles of design and best management practices and sort of how to, how to, um, think about them in terms of, uh, future weather patterns.
Wow.
Yeah.
One of the things we'd like to get on there also is, we don't, I mean, Mike can probably go through in his head and count stop signs or street signs and eventually come up with a number. But come up with a, a sign analysis, a sign, um, database as well. So you can put an overlay of, where are all the stop signs, where are all the street signs, where are all the no parking signs? Where are all, and, and you can layer that on and, and for budget purposes, we can say, okay, every year we need to be budgeting to replace X number of signs. Um, the same thing with culverts, now, we can look at the list and say, here's all the ones that are in poor and critical condition. And Mike has a better, instead of going, you know, by the, the seat of his pants or, you know, local knowledge, he can, he'll have a list now of, here's, here's ones I have to keep an eye on and here's the culverts I really should be paying attention to. And, you know, the data, the, the data won't lie to us as long as we keep it up and keep it current. So, I, I think the work Peter's done for a small amount of money that we paid is, has a huge payoff for us. And, and also, you know, we, we do have some money in, in, um, part-time, uh, labor, in a part-time labor line that we can continue to, um, have him. There's two parts to it, one is continue to gather data, but also to, to, to work with us to, to, to create a, a method by which we can gather the data and, when he's gone and keep updating it.
Well, I'll say that, um, in budget season, and Owen was there last week, this, Rick suggested getting an intern and it was one of those items that was like, I don't know, I don't know what we're gonna do with none. And Rick convinces, well, you can pay, uh, you know, for a moderate amount of money, you can get a lot of work done. And, and it's always a, it's a little bit of a dice roll as to what you get. Well, I have to say, we hit, seems like we hit the jackpot with Peter. Um, this work, uh, some of this work is work that we've been talking about for years. This work, uh, some of this work is work that we've been talking about for years. Um, and, and we were trying to, we had, the, the road book was on our goals list for many years about inventorying the roads and now it seems like we've got a large amount of that work done. Um, and, and Mike's back there nodding his head. It seems to me that this is a real powerful piece of information for you and that's, uh, that's terrific, so thank you very much.
And I hope you enjoyed your time up here with us.
Absolutely.
This is great work.
We, we checked in with him numerous times because too often internships are, become just simply file this, get this coffee, you know, make copies of this. And it's not meaningful work, so it has to be meaningful for both the town and also for the interns so that, you know, they spend the whole summer here. And so when he leaves here, he feels like, you know, I got something out of this other than just simply a paycheck.
Well, we did, it's this work that we, we never would have gotten done and, and, and I have to thank Rick for, for suggesting the idea and, and of, of going this route and it's worked out really well, so...
Yeah, thank you, this was a really valuable experience for me. I feel very fortunate and privileged and, um, uh, you know, I've benefited so much from, from this internship and I want to thank, uh, the town of Rockport and everyone at the Town Office and the DPW for, uh, helping me and supporting me through, um, through all this. It was challenging and very fulfilling and I'm, uh, very happy to have gotten to know Rockport a little bit better. I live down the coast in Newcastle, so I don't often make it up here, but it was really great getting to know the town.
That's very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Linda, did you have a comment?
Just a, a, just a quick question. Did you get an idea of the age range of those seven hundred and twenty-four culverts from who went out? Like thirty years, forty years?
Um, some of them are as much, uh, but I think those are sort of outliers to be decades old. Um, just in sort of like informal conversations with other people around the department, um, it sounded like, like one or two might be so old, but, um, generally, you know, I think they fall within sort of like the zero to, you know, fifteen or even twenty might be kind of like a standard deviation away from the average, yeah. Sure, thank you.
And I got one thing I want to throw out there. If we have a known extreme or heavy weather pattern coming up into our area sometime before winter time, I'll free up my couch or spare bedroom or something because what I think would be interesting is for you to drive around with Mike when we've had a lot of weather and you had that one picture, I think that was Park Street, that's is always a trouble area. But because it was so dry, I think it'd be great if you could spend a day or two up here after a heavy weather event and see if you can draw some correlations between our culverts and some of the road damage that we're experiencing because if we can mitigate it with just some culvert work versus repaving a whole huge swath and we know that that's gonna protect that road for a while, I think that would also be valuable information for us to have.
I'd love to, yeah, I mean, I'd love to see kind of the effects of an extreme storm and how these culverts do in terms of, yeah, doing their job.
He's got a relationship with these culverts, he's been looking at them all summer.
So how, how does that, Mike, work in the, the ninety-five that were in poor condition? How does that factor into your future paving considerations?
Any, anytime I've been paving, I, just like this Rockport Woods, they've all been, you know, replaced. You get something that's gonna go ten years and it's in good condition, but normally when I do a stretch, I make sure that's all...
I mean, in, in your upcoming road paving projects, are any of those projects in that ninety-five number?
And we have a technique to update the database when you do that, or is that still...
That's one of the things we have to work on is to make sure that that stuff gets updated.
I'd hate to see that get dropped, yeah.
Strike while the iron's hot before he leaves.
I'm outta here that early, that quickly. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm giving you a clap.
The, uh, the next item is to consider a request to accept the donation of a bench in Marine Park. And we have a memo from Abby on that one. And I guess it's termed a memorial bench. But, uh, the gentleman isn't, is still with us, so that's a little interesting. Would you mind coming up?
No.
Just to tell us a little bit about this. I mean, when I first read this, Mike, like, I don't know, this is a concern, I want to make sure it fits in with the plan for, for Harbor Park and, and I don't know whether the, the Parks Committee needs to, to weigh in on this or, or if we're, if it's fitting in well enough that we can...
I had the same concern when I had, um, approached, uh, Mr., blanking his name, Vance Williams, is that what it is? Yeah, um, and, uh, I had spoken with him on the phone and he had said that he wanted a memorial bench. And I said, oh, you know, thinking that it was for someone he knew. He was like, well, so, I'd love, I'd like to be inscribed with this and then the, the date I was born and then like dot, dot, dot. And I was like, oh, okay, so, it's, he's not passed away, he's alive, but he, the idea is that he wanted to sit on the bench and kind of ruminate, well, you know, just before and kind of before he passed away. I actually thought it was kind of a nice idea after talking to him. So, um, one of my concerns about the style of the bench is just that the, there's a, there's two granite benches down there right now um, in the same style and just not making it look, for lack of a better terms, like a cemetery down there with just those sort of benches. But we found a really nice spot under the tree toward the riverside. I walked around with Mr. Williams and we found a nice spot and I think it'll fit, it'll fit just fine and it'll be a nice addition. But I think in the future, and I don't know if we want to charge it with the, to the Parks Committee or the Harbor Committee or how we want to, want to do it, um, I would love to see that the, the benches that are already in place maybe go towards updating new benches in, in not this granite style, but in just the park bench style with the backs. Because these are just, you know, like a granite two-piece or, you know, three-piece, two legs and a top. Not the most comfortable, but they aren't, you know, they're, they're nice looking. I just don't think we want to put maybe anymore unless we find some other out of the way spots, to my opinion.
Okay. Have we had any, in any other parks, does anybody remember? I don't off the top of my head. Or what guidance did we use for those if there are any?
I don't, I don't know that there are any.
The library has one or two with the old library. But I don't know.
Yeah, isn't there a, it, there's a couple benches there already?
In, in my tenure, there's been one that has gone in, um, since I've been there and they, this is just the process. They asked for approval, approval from, a recommendation from me to you and then, um, you approved it.
So then is it you did talk with the Parks Committee just briefly?
I did not. It's kind of, it, I would love some defining roles with, with Marine Park as opposed to, with Park Committee and Harbor Committee. Where have, I mean, I think the Harbor Committee would like some definition there too, um, and I certainly would, so, and the Parks Committee would too.
I feel like this is a conversation we've had before with a lot of our parks. Clear lines of delineation are there, Mary Leah Park doesn't fall under you, but Marine Park, where does Parks Committee stop? Harbor Committee start and what's your role?
Right, that would be helpful, yeah, right, right, sure.
Um, is the Reverend a, a Rockport resident?
He is, I believe, yeah. I, I think so.
I don't know him. To help guide future gifts, should we have some parameters?
To have a, develop a policy of...
I mean, yeah, nothing fancy, but just, you know, so that we don't end up with twenty-eight different types and it's becoming of the area that it's being put in. Yeah, something to think about, I, I'm trying to decide, do we want the Parks Committee to, to take a look at this before we approve it? What, is he, he wants to get going on this, I presume, and wants to do it sooner rather than later?
That's my impression, yeah.
This would be not making a motion, but if I was gonna make a motion, what I would do is grant the authorization for you to do it, but contingent upon just quickly liaising with the Parks Committee. And it's not so much to solicit their input, but to make sure that further on down the road, they don't find out that an alteration was made and they weren't consulted. And then as we try to reconcile Parks Committee, Harbor Committee and you, we've made some friction there because they weren't part of the process. So that would be my only thing, if you could just personally reach out to maybe Dave Jackson as the Chair of Parks, he's still Chair of Parks, isn't he?
Yes, yeah.
And if he doesn't have any issues with it at all, I would be perfectly comfortable with it, just as a courtesy call of sorts. But that's just, those are just my thoughts.
They, they would actually be a good, uh, group to make a recommendation of, of a potential policy to...
In the future.
Of how we should handle this stuff.
Who's the Parks Liaison?
Uh, I think it's Mark.
Well, for your next meeting.
So, so just to clarify though, we don't know what the Reverend's standing is in town. I mean, is he a, a resident, a non-resident taxpayer or...
Can't answer that, you know, he really likes Rockport. No, he's not a summer visitor, he's definitely local, but I don't know how local, I can't, I can't recall, I can find out.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'd sort of like to know, I mean, I, I think if I went down to Vineyard Haven and wanted to put a bench in their park, it might raise some eyebrows, I mean, I understand where we're coming from, but...
Have there been any guidelines for, for something like this in the past, a precedent of any kind?
No, other than, just like I said, that was a process in the past. I've been involved in just one in my eight years here. And it was a memorial bench that I got approached with and then I sort of made a recommendation, passed it to you and it was, you know, I think we actually had the same back and forth then about kind of moving forward with it and...
And I think precedent's been anytime someone wants to give something to the town, we typically don't turn it down. Something that's gonna be useful for the town, but that's been our precedent.
Your comment resonated with me that we, we approach a point of saturation and it sounds from what you're saying as if we're not there yet, but at some point we likely will be.
Yeah, and then, and then you have the problem of, well, you know, whoever comes further down the road says, well, how come I can't do it when somebody else did? Mike, Mike wants to say something.
Yeah, I just, that's what I was getting at is, you know, I think it's good to look at, have Parks look at this, come up with like maybe a style or a guideline through the town so we don't have six or seven different benches and especially being at the harbor, you know, if we come up with a bench and maybe has to meet a certain criteria, there could be a plaque on it because some of the benches at the park, I think, need to be updated. I think they're getting to a point, so maybe if we come up with a style, this is what's available or possible if you want to do this.
Well, a question too, with the bench like they're suggesting here, is this gonna be carved into the granite or is it...
Blasted, sand blasted.
Okay, because, I mean, then, you know, what happens fifty years down the road when it wears, you know, and who's, who maintains it? You know, and does the town end up having to fix all the letters and the names or... So it's just something to think about.
Would, how cumbersome would it be to have the Parks Committee weigh in on this before it goes forward?
I, I think it's not a bad idea personally, I don't know how Abby feels.
No, I don't think it's a bad idea either of us.
Well, then, I think that's worth doing. Uh, I don't know what, Mark, when does the Parks Committee meet next, you know? Off the top of my head, couldn't tell you.
I just hope we can, can find a very sensitive and appropriate way to convey to the person who'd like to give us this gift that we love the sentiment behind it, we would just like to make sure that we handle it in the most thoughtful way possible.
Yeah.
And I, yeah, and, and before I walked around with him, I said the same thing, I said, you know, I'm not sure what the process is gonna be because we don't have one.
Yeah.
I'll check with Dave tomorrow, but I would suggest tabling it this evening for September. Okay.
Can we track down a little background too?
The Reverend's, Reverend seemed to be in good health. He'll make it another month.
Might be a HIPAA violation or something, I don't know.
You never know, for any of us.
Okay, Owen, your agenda in September is getting bigger.
Oh, right, nah, I'll just, I'm gonna table everything in September.
Okay, uh, so we can now move on to the warrant items. We have some proposed warrant articles, uh, some charter amendments, and some, mostly minor changes, uh, we have them in our packet. The, uh, reserve account policy, uh, is putting in, uh, into the charter which was suggested. Uh, we have the auditor which was, uh, conflicted in the, uh, charter where it had the town manager doing it and the select board doing it, it is a select board hire. And then the marijuana, uh, title, we don't have wording for that, other, just a, uh, an ordinance prohibiting retail marijuana establishments. And then we have the coastal waters and harbors ordinance, uh, which is below. Do we want to take these separately?
Yes.
I know, I have some issues with some of them and not with others, so... So we'll have to have, uh, separate motions then. The charter changes, in my opinion, are fairly straightforward. So Article Two and Article Three, uh, as numbered here, and these numbers could potentially change. Does anybody, let's, let's talk about those first, does anybody have any issues with those or questions on those charter changes?
Just seems like cleanup to me.
It, it really is, I think for the most part, particularly the, uh, the auditor situation because we found that there was a, there was a inconsistency in the charter with that and we fixed that. And the reserve account is, that was, I think, suggested by the previous auditor, I believe. And council looked at those, so, um, Articles Two and Three, I would invite a motion on Articles Two and Three at this point and then we can move on to the others.
How is that worded? Uh, I move to approve the before, proposed warrant articles number two and number three for inclusion on the November seventh, twenty-seventeen special town meeting warrant, which wording could be changed at the Monday, September eleventh public hearing.
A motion, have a second?
Yeah.
Okay, second. Okay, any further discussion on Articles Two and Three? If not, all in favor of the motion setting the public hearing? Okay, uh, any opposed? No, that's a five to nothing vote. Okay, the next one is Article Four, which is the ordinance prohibiting retail marijuana establishments. And this is the, uh, I assume that, will there be more wording than this or is this it?
No, I think, I believe this is it.
Okay.
The ordinance will, the, this is the ord- the wording of the...
The question.
The question, but there'll be changes in the, um, in the ordinance that will prohibit it, correct?
It'll be a new ordinance. There'll be no change to an existing one.
Okay, it's just a new, new ordinance that just makes it...
There's no land use impact, it's not a land use matter. Because we aren't, um, looking at why, where in town do we want it and where in town don't we, so there's...
But is it a, will it become a new defined use in the land ordinance table?
No.
Okay, so, so we'll just have a, it'll just be a separate ordinance? And will that wording of that ordinance be available for the September eleventh public hearing?
Yes, it'll have to be.
And, and will that prohibit the commercial cultivation also, or is that somehow included in this?
And that actually touches, while Jamie's walking up, that touches on one of my concerns about this, um, which is it's a catch-all. It's a catch-all for everything related to recreational marijuana, meaning the retail sales, the cultivation for commercial purposes, because we can't necessarily prohibit personal growth. Uh, and then the inspections, because they're, they're broken into three big categories as far as what these new marijuana's commercial activities are gonna look like, so it's retail sales, cultivation, inspection. And I can definitely understand why folks may be concerned about retail sales because then you're talking about storefronts where people have got marijuana, whatever, in the window and then all of a sudden you're the marijuana town. But as a town that also has a decent amount of farmer base and arable land, I would be concerned about putting all of it in there and limiting commercial cultivation for folks that that could be a phenomenal economic, um, opportunity for them to simply grow it and then sell it in a separate town. And then the inspection, I mean, me personally, if a high-tech lab wanted to set up in Rockport to inspect marijuana for statewide distribution, we just don't sell it in our town, I would be very open to that because that means we're getting a lab set up here in town. That's knowing full well that the vote did not go well in favor of recreational marijuana in town.
And that's really what we're responding to.
Yep.
With Rick and, and interpreting the results of those, uh, of those local and statewide votes, the, the simplest approach is to keep it from becoming a land use issue for now and do a standalone ordinance that the, the town attorney just pulled from, that our firm is very much involved in main municipals' model ordinance, um, uh, production. So, uh, we have the, the basics and it is a very stripped-down ordinance that says all of the uses contemplated in the act are prohibited. And it leaves aside a big question of how many of those same things could be, um, considered as prohibited under, as permitted under the two thousand nine Medical Marijuana Act. So, you know, that, that's a question that'd just be left to the side and this is really the, the minimum response that the town can muster to the, the recent votes.
Wait, so if someone came to your office and said, I've got ten acres of land and I want a permit to grow mari- Wait, so if someone came to your office and said, I've got ten acres of land and I want a permit to grow marijuana for medical purposes, what is your response to that individual?
I'll have to call the town attorney and get back to you.
And, and he's saying, he just, he's, he is watching at home, actually.
And I'll get back to you after September eleven.
Phil, why don't you send Ricky a text?
He just, he just did. He said, this, the way this is worded, it will cover, it will cover all retail cultivation as well. Because we, he and I did have a conversation about that with the, with this wording, and he said, because of the way the statute is, is written, this, this Article four would, would prohibit retail cultivation.
Which statute, though? Are we talking about the medical marijuana statute?
No, the, the
The retail one?
The new retail one.
So Phil, if Jamie calls you up and said someone wants to do it for medical purposes, what's your response then?
His response is gonna be that
Twenty-second delay.
Yeah. His response will likely be that it's, this ordinance would prohibit it. You'd have to go back and amend the ordinance to allow commercial cultivation.
Something other than cultivation, than commercial cultivation, you know, we can also observe, there will be things that, there, there remain many things that are permitted by the Medical Marijuana Act that, that are far smaller in scope than what you're thinking of. How many of them overlap with the uses that were contemplated in the Recreational Marijuana Act, I don't know.
Well, it seems to me that, you know, we need to vote to put this on, to put it on the warrant, and with the idea it could be changed
Yes, it can.
At the public hearing.
Right, and you, what you're really doing is just, you're, you're starting the train moving, and you're just saying, okay, we're gonna put this on. You can pull it off, you can change it, you can do whatever you'd like with all of these. It just, it sets up the public hearing date, and once that public hearing date is, happens, then we have to meet the dates that Linda prescribes for getting it on the ballot. But you still, you still have the ability to modify, change it, depending on what people say at public hearing.
Do you want me to do a motion on number, Article four?
If you would like to.
Okay, well, I'm just trying to get this. Make a motion to approve the proposed warrant Article four for inclusion on the November seventh, 2017 special town meeting warrant, which wording could be changed at the Monday, September eleventh public hearing.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion on this? If not, all in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? Okay, that's a five to nothing vote. And the last article is the changes to the coastal waters and harbors ordinance. I will start the discussion on this one by saying I have some issues with this. I don't like the idea of calling it a special exception. I think it's putting the Harbor Committee in the, in the position of becoming a quasi-judicial board, which they are not trained for. I think that it has the potential to open up legal issues for the town. Because basically, they're gonna have to go through a quasi-judicial process with each applicant here, and if the applicant is turned down, then they can appeal it, and so I'm, I'm not terribly excited about this particular warrant article at all.
This was the recommendation of Town Council with, as the best approach to solving the problem and coming up with some means of the current boat owner having a means to get heard and, and in a process by which he could be considered for a larger vote. And basically, he did use the, the land use ordinance as a model or a template for it and adapted it for for this purpose.
Can I just ask a point of clarification? We're seeing this based on the recommendation of council, not based on the recommendation of our Harbor Committee?
The Harbor Committee has, has been working on it, but they have not finished their recommendation of their, their language. They, they've made some, they've made some changes to it, but they haven't had a, they have not had a formal meeting where they've met and voted on it. So you're, you're seeing just what our lawyer has recommended.
They're, they've looked at the, the sentiment of it, so they would like it to, the actual language of it, just the chair and the vice chair have looked at and have some edits, but nothing sort of structural, for lack of a better term, you know, just, or procedural, I guess I should say. So they have, they do, you know, they would like to see it go forward, but massage the language of it more. But that was the sort of, how, what they're thinking of now, but, you know, they would, they, they don't, they seem to like the process of, you know, doing some, having some sort of special exception. We looked at trying to have, have one, sort of a blanket. We don't have time to do that, like, so we could have it encompass the whole ordinance rather than just this one piece. It's like the one, this one part of our ordinance is very a de facto sentence. You know, no boat shall be above forty feet, and that's really one of the only things in the ordinance that's so ironclad and just there. So that, that was why it was just, and we didn't have time to do a whole, you know, Rick, Rick said, we wouldn't be able to.
But there's a reason for the forty-foot limit, though, is there not?
I, I don't actually have any history of, you know, why that forty, I mean, yes, space, I mean, it's a mathematical equation. He does fit as, as it stands where he is now, but if everybody were to go to fifty feet, we'd have a problem, which is why, you know, case by case would be the way I would look at it.
Just off the top of your head and just rough numbers, what's the distance between where the boat is currently moored and the distance to get out of the inner harbor?
Where, where he would have to go?
Wouldn't, where he's not subject to the forty-foot?
Okay, where I could fit him. I mean, because there are all the other mooring, so he'd have to be in the outer harbor right now, until he waited on the list to get a, a fifty-foot swing room, which is
And that's
hard to do.
Two hundred, three hundred feet from where he's currently moored?
All of that, yeah.
Two or three hundred yards.
Yards, yeah, more like yards, yep.
Yards?
Yep.
I'm the liaison on the Harbor Committee, and I attended a meeting where this was discussed. And I've really gone back and forth on this. I've spoken to some people that work down on the harbor, kind of gotten their opinions, and you know, there are different ways to look at it. I wonder, Abby, if the Harbor Committee, though, is just sort of not taking the path of least resistance by saying, oh, you know, okay, let's sort of, let's sort of do this. To be honest, I haven't really decided how I'll vote on this. On the one hand, it really rubs me the wrong way, you know, that Kenny was building this boat for at least three years, if not five years, and somehow nobody anticipated this as a problem well before launching day. And, you know, I think Kenny has really backed us into a corner with this, and that, that makes me sort of angry. I mean, we're a country in a state and a town of laws and regulations, and it says forty feet. Another thing is, is that Kenny has a bit of a reputation. I can remember when I was on the Harbor Committee, there were issues. I don't remember exactly what they were, but he's not unknown to the Harbor Committee as someone who kind of bucks the trend a little bit. So that's kind of my two cents worth, and I guess I'd like to hear how the other.
Well, I, I have some questions about that, if I may, and, and I am only really learning about this situation today. But I have to admit that my initial reaction, based on the limited amount that I know, is similar to Doug's. It seems to me that we have a person whom I don't know, who has been for quite a while building a boat, knowing that we have a regulation which his boat would exceed. And so what I'm curious about is, has this individual or any people who feel similarly to him gone through some sort of process in those three years, or however long it's been, to try to enact this change so that we're not reacting to a situation that's been thrust upon us?
A year and a half to two years. I'd have to look exactly at the date, because I knew Kenny was building this boat all along, and I knew it was going to be over the limit, and that he would want to put it on his mooring. I went out to his shop and had a discussion with him, had him get on the Harbor Committee. He came to the Harbor Committee. I think that was a year and a half ago, and he was trying to get, you know, a special exception then, you know, hoping Rick could just sort of wave his magic wand and say, well, we'll allow you to go here. And what he's, not, what he didn't understand is, you know, the integrity of the ordinance is, it's all right there. You know, I mean, it's, it's just a pretty plain and clear, and there's nothing, because it gets voted on by the people, I mean, I don't think he quite got that initially in that initial meeting, that it was a vote by townspeople. And you can't just say, okay, we're gonna allow you to go because you fit there. And I wasn't sure he was going to fit there at the time. So fast forward to launching day, which he did not make me aware that the boat was going in. I found out the day of the launch that it was going in, and it sort of made up my mind that unless the boat, because there were hundreds of people, it was a celebration. I mean, it's a, it was, it's a pretty good feat that he, that he did what he did. He built by hand, and, you know, I'm not gonna take that away from him. Yeah, and so I wasn't gonna be too draconian about it that day, unless it was gonna be a egregious hazard to navigation or anybody else's mooring or boat. So when he put it on, it wasn't, it wasn't that. So we sort of went the, I spoke with Rick and talked it over with him, and we went litigation route. So Kenny had hired a lawyer in advance of launching the boat, knowing that this was going to be an issue. And his, he was advised by his counsel to push the issue, put it on the mooring.
Do you know if, whether there was an attempt to get the ordinance changed, to go through the process that we have established?
That's what, that's sort of what this is.
But I mean, prior to the boat being in the water.
Yeah, after the fact, but, but no, I mean, I, I feel like, you know, that I've done a whole lot of spoon-feeding of trying to get things going, you know, because I, I do want to see it happen. I don't want to see, you know, I would, I don't see why there can't be a few boats that are a little bit bigger if the ordinance should change, but the ordinance must get changed. That doesn't mean that we're not gonna do, you know, he has, he's been served with a pre-notice of violation, because a notice of violation would really, like Rick said, when he was talking about something else. But it starts a train moving in a direction that will not stop without pretty heavy, a really heavy financial penalty and court, you know, it's, it's totally out of our hands as soon as we give them the notice of violation. So he has a pre-notice of violation, whereas, so then, if this does not get resolved or voted on or anything, then he will be served with a formal notice of violation, and we'll go from, from there. So we're not, we didn't sort of roll over and do nothing, but this is
There was a period where we were struggling with getting his attention and getting him to realize that, that there was a ticking clock, and if we didn't get things moving, he was gonna miss the next window of opportunity to get this on, to get any kind of change on the ballot. And Phil did point out to me in a text that the, the initial recommendation for the special exception was one that was generated by his attorney as a possibility. And so his attorney came up with the special exception idea, and Phil said that's a perfectly reasonable approach to the problem. And Phil, our attorney and his attorney worked on the language that we see here as a, as an, as an appropriate response. The, the big, the underlying question is, do you want to go that route?
And I'm trying to take, I'm trying to take Kenny and his boat out of this conversation and focus more on what this is. I mean, I'll say one last time, it's a beautiful boat. But what I think I have as concerns is, I mean, it doesn't take too many of these fifty-footers to all of a sudden really start crimping your style and your swinging radius and all that stuff. And yeah, one over here and one over here, not necessarily the end of the world, until you put a third one in between them. And, I mean, is that a, like, unlikely scenario?
Which is, is why that, the ordinance will read that there's a, there's going to be a, you know, you don't just apply for a special exception and get it. You know, you'll have to prove that all your neighbors, sort of like land use, like when you add on, you have to, you know, a butters can come in and they can talk. So anybody that's around, they'd have to prove that the, the cost of any moving will be on them and that, that, that they can actually fit, and it has to get a recommendation by me.
Has there been discussion about whether, if a special exception were to be granted, that it costs more?
It's an idea. It does cost a dollar a foot. It would cost him a couple of dollars more.
So I, I agree to a certain extent with Owen's point that if we take this individual out of the equation, I could feel okay voting for something like this if, based on the recommendation of the Harbor Committee and the Harbor Master, we deem that it is really in the best interest of our harbor.
But it's not us deeming it.
But I would hate to, it doesn't feel good to make this change simply because we're backed into a corner by one person. Does that make sense, the way I'm explaining it? And I, I would feel much better about it if I could really hang my hat on a recommendation that in principle, this is something that's good for our harbor.
And I think, you know, one of the ways we possibly could do that is to say, okay, let's, let's admit that fishing vessels are getting bigger. And, and we have the goal of wanting to keep Rockport Harbor as a working harbor with some fishing vessels. Okay, let's make a new plan, and maybe let's identify, you know, a limited number of moorings in the inner harbor that could, that could host the fifty-foot boat and subject to the, you know, the swing room that they need and, and the, and the pattern of moorings or something like that. And as you suggest, up the fee. You know, that that mooring costs a little more money. And, and make a plan for it. I, I don't like this reactive part of it. I re, and, and basically, I mean, I don't know the man at all, quite honestly, but, but he's put a boat in the harbor in contravention of our ordinance. And now he wants to say, change the ordinance and make it right. And that, that does rub me the wrong way, I have to say. And, and aside from my first comment, which is I don't, I don't like the special exception process. I think that turns the Harbor Committee into a quasi-judicial board, and I, they're not trained for it. And I think it opens up the town to possible legal issues down the road when it doesn't go well. You know, this one might go just fine, but the next two or three might not, and that puts us in a difficult position and, and with a lot of legal costs potentially, so. I guess I, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I I can vote to put it on, put it on as a public hearing if the rest of the board wants to do that, but I'm not gonna be here in September, but we recommend these things on the warrant. I won't, I won't recommend this.
Is there, are there, there is, there are places for fifty-foot swings further out?
Yes, yep.
How much further? A couple hundred yards?
If I, if, if I were to move him out right now, it would be all of, you know, two hundred, three hundred yards, a boschamp, I mean, right now, for that much swing room. I mean, or displace a couple of moorings, and maybe we do that for commercial vessels, I don't know, but right now with, what's in there.
I'm just trying to think of a way that we can shift him out as an option, if he chooses not the option.
That was given to him, and he, he refused to take it, correct?
You didn't want to row?
Because we, you were, you were holding some mooring. Initially, you said you, you had some reassignments?
Yeah, because I, I mean, I've known this was coming for a while now, and I, the Harbor Committee sort of said, okay, well, look for something in the middle harbor that you can find. I had a, a couple on hold, but I can only hold so long with a waiting list. Tried to get in touch with Kenny several times.
And when all this work is being done, there's no reason why we can't designate an area or zone for fifty and above. So everybody, not sprinkling them within the current forties, but move them out in a, in a group of their own.
Well, the challenge is that he's, they're not gonna want to be that far out.
Right, and, right, and so one of the sentiments, because the Harbor Committee is feeling exactly like you are. Right, and just that I, they would have a lot less heartburn about it if there's not begging for forgiveness rather than asking for permission. So in sort of response to that, they asked that Kenny make a formal request to, to move out, and then, you know, I look at it and decide whether or not, you know, and, and right now, honestly, for a fishing boat where it is, is not a bad place for it, but just temporarily. If it weren't in violation of the ordinance, it, it does work where it is. So it would be sort of like a request denial, because I don't, I don't have another moor. He'd have to put new gear out, so it's not like I have another, another mooring for him to put on it right now. He'd have to then move his mooring, and once you get into moving people, you find, it's a whole, you know, there's a whole other can of worms.
So that's why he, I, I guess, perhaps why he refused, is because there isn't just another mooring for him to go to. He'd have to actually move his mooring.
You'd have to, yes, right.
Oh, lordy.
Right, so there's, yeah.
If I, Owen, ask a question building on something that Ken said, and it If I, Owen, ask a question building on something that Ken said, and it made me think too, I've been thinking about it, that, the trend towards larger boats. Is that something that you're seeing, and maybe we'll say region wide, but then isolate it down to Rockport Harbor? Do you see more of these larger boats wanting to moor in our harbor? Cause we wanna be really open to commercial fishing, for sure.
Right.
Is this a trend? Should we anticipate larger than forty foot boats trying to moor in our harbor?
I think we should, oh, you know, think about it for sure, yeah, anticipate for sure. As water gets warmer, you have to go further out, and diversify a little bit more with different catches. So certainly, we're not the only ones that have size limitations.
Would it be feasible to identify a handful of commercial fisher type moorings in the inner harbor where fifty foot boats could go, right now?
That's, it, that's a tough, it's, it's tough, just depending on the wind condition, you know, depending on the day, depending on the.
It would have to be the something that would, you know, encompass all wind conditions.
The catch probably in the one spot where.
That it would, you know, it would work. I mean, there are a couple, and, and we're, and we're talking, you know, if they all grew by ten feet. But if someone wanted a forty five foot boat, it may work on their mooring by just juggling a little bit. So it would be hard to come up, I mean, I've, I've actually, and I can show it, to taken the GIS map and put concentric circles of swings as best you can, and seen how many you can fit in there, and just done this sort of map like that.
Do you do all those at low tide?
Uh, it's, you're supposed to, yeah, swing radius is sort of like mid tide or low tide, you know, just, just at.
But you basically, you figure out the swing at the worst possi, the biggest arc that it can make is what you're laying down for a, okay.
You know, I, I mean, I go back to the idea of, you know, if we can identify a limited number of moorings in the inner harbor, thinking of commercial fishermen, and then, and then identify those as able to take a bigger boat, then we just make that by rule. We don't need this special exception process, we just say, well, you know, mooring number one, three, nine, and fifteen are for fifty foot boats, and, and they cost more money.
And this is something we're preparing for, for the future.
Yeah.
So what, what, how, then we'd have to do something with the current ordinance to, I mean, we'd have, the ordinance would still have to change, just in a different way, wouldn't be a special exception.
But it would be a black and white change, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be putting the harbor committee in the, in the position of having to make a judgment. It would be saying, okay, we're gonna change the mooring field, and we're gonna allow whatever, however many moorings you can to have that larger swing. And these are the moorings that are gonna be allotted to commercial fishermen who have, want larger boats.
Is that something that you think we can do?
I mean, it's, it's tough. To do that, we'd have to reassign some, we'd have to reas, I mean, cause they're all, they all belong to each person, so if I say, you know.
What they're asking.
Yours is can grow, but Leland's, yours can't, that might, that might be, you know, I just, I can anticipate some.
And I, I'm just asking, I don't know whether it's feasible or not.
This has all been something that we've thought about for a long time, trying to figure out what is the best way to try to.
Well, and say that we had of the X amount of moorings we have, and I don't know how many we have, in that inner harbor, that forty foot limit, if you were to remove a couple and replace them with these larger ones that we would ask for more money for them to have the bigger mooring in the inner harbor, do you, in the conversations you've had with folks all over the place, do you think if we had four, just picking a random number, can you fill the other three?
Not quite following.
Are there other people building boats? Is there someone in the harbor that would like to be closer to the fish dock, and would move from Camden Harbor over to Rockport Harbor because they can moor their boat, their, their forty seven foot, forty eight foot boat? I mean, do you, if we went this black and white route where we tried to restructure some stuff, maybe eliminate one or two moorings and replace them with more valued ones, would they just sit there idle with a regular thirty foot boat on it? Or do you think it would be easy to fill those spots with larger boats?
No, I think it would, that's sort of why I was thinking, is that there's nobody, like, there's nobody waiting on the waiting list with bigger boats that are waiting. But you're, you know, that's why the case by case situation is a little bit easier, cause, you know, we wouldn't wanna get into displacing, is the majority, the fifteen out of the twenty four moorings we have in the inner harbor are commercial fishermen. The others are commercial users, not commercial fishermen.
That goes back to similar to what I said earlier, and Ken had alluded to, having a block of an area, if you've only got one person or two people there to use it, fine, but there is up to maybe two or three more that can come and use that, if you're.
We, we can't create space that doesn't exist.
Right.
We're confined by the boundaries of the harbor, and this, you know, we could, you can get fifty foot moorings in there, but you may only get, how many do we?
You know, maybe only get four, you know, four out of.
Yeah, you'd lose some moorings.
Right, and, and that would require other moorings to move around, which is why the sort of hearing would happen to say, okay, are you willing to move your mooring twenty feet to the south to accommodate your neighbor? I mean, and I just feel like that's, I don't know how else to, how we would do it.
So you're saying, Rick, you're saying the town attorney has suggested it be put on there?
Well, he's saying it's a reasonable approach to the problem. He's saying that this is a reasonable approach to the problem, is whether, the question is whether you wanna do it or not. I'm just going back and forth with him.
In a text to me earlier today, that, you know, we, if we don't want the harbor committee to be a quasi judicial board, that we could potentially refer this matter to a board that has that experience, whether it's the ZBA or the planning board. I don't know whether we wanna ask them to take on this type of a review or not, or. But we could, he said we could do that.
And you also have time to, you're not finalizing a decision here. If you decide to just move forward, it just puts it on the public hearing, it, it sets it up for the public hearing. And at the public hearing, you can hear the recommendation of the harbor committee, and they may have some things that, some comments that will convince you, or make you feel like, no, we're not gonna put this on the ballot.
Will the harbor committee have a recommendation by September eleventh?
Yes, yep.
Will the harbor committee have a fully fleshed out, cause, I mean, they've had conversations about this, in general terms, in many. So you feel like them coming, if we decide to put this on, which I'm hesitant to, but I'm okay with it, because we can kill it later. But they'll be able to come in and really give a good presentation on right, wrong, indifferent, figure out, so they'll, they're okay on standby, ready to meet at some point before our September eleventh meeting?
They're actually ready, well, not ready to meet, but we were actually, I was thinking they had to meet before this meeting, so we were gonna have an emergency meeting last week to just look at the language, but I didn't.
It would've been better. It would've been helpful if they did meet, and you could have that, but they, getting them to meet.
Their, their next regular scheduled meeting is October, uh, October, August twenty fourth.
Well, the question before us is to, to put this, basically approve the warrant article for inclusion on the, on the warrant, and with the wording that could be changed at the public hearing. The wording could be changed at the public hearing to the point that we take it off.
And what I'm, what I'm just curious about is, I'm seeing a major revamp. I like, I don't necessarily have issues with special exemptions, cause the threshold is just so much higher. You're under scrutiny, you can be turned down all the time, that's why it's special. But at the same time, a black and white giving you all the time, and you to come back to us and say, I figured it out. I can reorganize this, not lose any moorings, blah, 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 or I can't. And so if you can go that one route of telling us that we can do it, then we can go the black and white route, where we say, we've got four new moorings, and they're all up to fifty feet, you just gotta pay more. Or I couldn't figure it out, I can only fit one or two as it stands right now, go the special exception route. But I guess the final concern is that if we don't have that black and white language come September eleventh to substitute in for this language, then we're just gonna kill the whole thing, cause I can't necessarily be comfortable with this as written.
I would point out that a special exception, and Jamie can correct me if I'm wrong, but a special, a special exception is permitted in land use terminology, subject to the conditions.
Right.
So the harbor committee then would be, in this case, acting as a quasi judicial board, would be having to look through these conditions. And if they can't point to one of those conditions, they can't turn it down because they don't like it. They have to go by these conditions. And so it is, it becomes permitted in a way. Yes, it's a special exception because there are some special conditions that have to be met, but it doesn't mean that they can just say, well, I don't like the idea, and vote it down.
If we put it on the town meeting agenda, does that imply a tacit approval on our part?
No, because we'll have an, an opportunity to recommend. If it, well, right now, what we'll do, we would be voting to put it on the warrant, subject to changing it at the public hearing. The public hearing will be September eleventh at our meeting then, and, and at that point, we could pull it off.
Yes, you can.
We could, we could change the wording to the point that there aren't any words left.
And I mean, it, would it be an appropriate time to have Kenny's lawyer come to that meeting? I mean, is that what happens?
I mean, if they're gonna show up, I hesitate, I hesitated to ask, but, yeah, if they wanna come, that's fine, but.
That's the perfect time for them.
Yeah, absolutely, but. So in answer to your question, at, at, also at the September eleventh meeting, we would be voting to place it on the warrant and to make a recommendation.
Right.
We could vote to place it on the warrant, and then we could recommend to the townspeople that they don't vote for it.
And there might be people on the harbor committee that don't recommend it either, I don't know.
So could one of the first things be on September eleventh, is information coming from the harbor committee that would help us make a decision prior to putting it on there the same day?
That'll be the public hearing part of the, of the, during the public hearing, they would be able to speak. Usually you speak for or against, or neither for nor against, and they would probably speak neither for nor against and present their information.
Well, I, I guess what I'm saying is, right now, we're considering either putting it on there or not. And we're also wanting more information from the harbor committee. So could we put off putting it on there or not tonight?
We have to put it on tonight to meet the deadlines, the statutory deadlines for public hearings, cause we have to advertise the public hearing so many days in advance, and the public hearing has to be so many days before the election. So our choice this evening is to either put it on and schedule the public hearing, or to kill it now. If we, if we don't vote to put it on tonight, then it doesn't go on, and it won't go on again until June.
In my two cents, I, I'm not, I'm not gonna try to kill it tonight, because buys you some time to put us at ease, but I'm not opposed to killing it later.
Well, then I would, I would. They did with Obamacare though, wasn't it? They tried to.
Then I would, I mean, I'll entertain a motion if somebody wants to make one.
So do we, do we have to, do we have to do something now, or can we put it off until June? And have something more definitive to vote on?
He's gonna have his boat sitting in your harbor.
Well, if we put it off, I mean, we've, we've gotta enforce our ordinance. And right now, they're dealing with a situation where they've said, okay, well, we're worked toward it. But if, if we put it off until June, then I, I think that.
If it gets put off, I'll just tell you, I mean, just with our prenotice of violation, he'll get a formal notice of violation and be charged.
Dollar, a hundred dollars a day.
A hundred dollars a day, up to twenty five hundred dollars a day.
Was that timeline on, when is it transition from prenotice to full notice?
Uh, what, um, November, right after the vote.
After November.
Yep, so if it doesn't get on the vote, then it would, you know, it would have to be relooked at.
He'd be served with a notice of violation.
So I.
And there's the backing us into a corner piece again, that makes us uncomfortable.
And I keep saying last thing, and I'm sorry, cause it's never is, do you have the time and the space with the harbor committee to work up a section, a second option for us? Because what I'm not looking forward to is sitting at the public hearing and trying to wordsmith something that is, got some gravity to it.
Absolutely, and we, actually, we, I say we, but the chair and the vice chair, I've already looked at this, and redlined it up. But we could, we didn't wanna put that piece in front of you, because how confusing is that, you know, it would just be.
Well, because the harbor committee hadn't voted.
Hadn't voted on it, and so it was just those two, so we didn't get a chance to meet yet.
As soon as you vote on that, get it to us electronically, I'd love to review it.
We could, yeah, we could, we could do that.
Okay.
Yeah, the challenge is the harbor committee.
Votes, I mean, once a month, yep.
And, you know, they were supposed to have a meeting, they didn't have a meeting, and, and so there, we, we, we're flying without the benefit of their recommendation.
Right.
And I, and I was not willing to bring forward the recommendation of two people, when the committee's made up of five.
Well, so, and this has to be done tonight.
We have to, if we don't vote to place it on the warrant tonight, then it, then it's done for November.
Why do we always get, I shouldn't say we always get, but why do we get like right here, and we don't have a little wiggle room?
Because if, correct me if I'm wrong, what we're doing now is notifying the public, and giving the public enough time to be aware that these are the things that are coming down the pike. They're not final yet, and so this is our ability to let the public know, come and give us your feedback on these, we have another shot at changing this. But approval tonight is so we can notify with this language that we're gonna be discussing, this is a potential warrant article in November.
We're still quite a ways away, but it's, Owen's exactly right. What you're doing is, is you're notifying the public that we're gonna be discussing it on this date, and, you know, it can all change. I mean, it's a little bit of miss, it, to me, it sounds a little misleading, but I, I did get a text from our, from Phil saying, we are fine with the way the, the motions are, because really, what you're doing is, you're, you're moving this to the next stage, which is the public hearing. You're moving it to hold a pub, public hearing on the proposed warrant article, the way it's worded here. And then at that meeting, after that meeting, you will move to put it on the warrant or not put it on the warrant. But the, you know, the way the motion is written, Phil said it, it is, it's okay, but I think it's, it's seen, it makes it seem like there's a finality to this, that there isn't. You know, the finality will come when you have to vote.
First step in the process.
It's the first step in the process.
And like, maybe I'll throw this out there, Mark, it'll help wrap our brains around it, so, and I don't wanna digress from what we're talking about, but it's, it kinda paints the picture all right, which is, when the citizens did a citizen's petition to put the one lime rock in keeping the library at one lime rock for time and all eternity, because that was a citizen's petition, which is different from what we're doing now, we're required to put it on, but we recommended unanimously against that. So if that keeping it at one lime rock for all time and eternity had been generated internally, we would've probably killed it from even getting on the warrant, because no one liked it anyway. But this isn't the time where we actually put it on the warrant, this is the time where we talk about the public hearing.
Well, I'm gonna suggest a motion here.
One quick question over, Rick. So when this goes to the town meeting for discussion, you know, again, on the face of it, you look at the, their, their warrant, and you think, well, that looks pretty reasonable, but how much of the backstory comes out?
This won't go into town, it, this doesn't, this, it goes on a ballot, and so there's no real discussion.
Well, okay, I'm saying, at the, at the public hearing.
How much of the backstory will come out?
Yeah.
Depends on what people wanna ask.
Depends on who shows up.
See, that's, you know.
So the voters voted down, then what?
Yeah, well, then we're.
Then, then he serves the notice of violation.
Oh, if it gets voted down in November, the notice of violation automatically kicks in.
And it could, I mean, because I, I'm, my guess is that there will be people in the community who will advocate voting it down. As it stands right now, unless there are some changes to it. And this board may not support it, if you don't know yet. But in order to move on, I would entertain a motion to, or not, if, if you wanted, if you wanna skip it, and we can, or we can vote against the motion, but we need to, we need to move on, I think we've discussed this as much as we can.
I move to hold a public hearing on the proposed warrant, warrant article number five for the November seventh, twenty seventeen special town meeting warrant on Monday, September eleventh, twenty seventeen, seven PM, Rockport Opera House Meeting Room.
Is that the correct motion? Or are we still on the previous motion?
You gotta look at the previous, the, the other motion.
Yes.
I'm backwards, all right, so strike that.
Yep.
Move to approve the before, proposed warrant article number five for inclusion on the November seventh, twenty seventeen special town meeting warrant, which wording could be changed at the Monday, September eleventh public hearing, and thank you.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Do we wanna discuss this anymore, or are we ready to vote?
This is just to, my, speaking personally, I'm giving the harbor committee and other interested parties more time to come up and try to put us at ease. That's why I'm.
Second.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, it's a four to one vote, so Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Cassas? Dr. Cole?
No.
And McKinley is a reluctant yes. So that's a four to one vote, okay. The next item, and I know we wanna take a break, but the next item should be perfunctory.
Yeah.
It's just, it's, it's just the same thing, we just have to set the time for the public hearing, and we can do this as it's printed here.
So since I read it already, I move to hold a public hearing on the proposed warrant articles two through five for the November seventh, twenty seventeen special town meeting warrant on Monday, September eleventh, twenty seventeen, seven PM, Rockport Opera House Meeting Room.
Second.
I moved in second, any discussion?
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a five to nothing vote. We will take a five-minute break to allow for restroom use and other.
That's correct.
So wait a second, are we, are we, every day, is there a new cha-ching from the notice of violation, just like there would be for that boat owner?
No, we haven't applied any fines. Oh.
We gotta reassess some of the stuff that we do sometime.
In this case, uh.
We're very, we are a very nice town, with people that are outside of compliance with our ordinances. Or at least in a couple of instances, to where things have been raised.
And that, and that was the discussion when this item first came up before the previous board, was that we have to put our foot down on, on some of these things and, and proceed with it. And that's, that's what we're doing tonight with this, so. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that's a five to nothing vote. Okay, we've already done that. Uh, the next item then is to appoint the auditor for FYE, June 2018. And authorize the town manager to sign a three-year contract with an auditor. Rick, you want to introduce this one?
Yeah, it, as it says in my backup material, uh, we interviewed the auditors, uh, there was a committee made up of Owen, Ken, myself, and Megan. And, uh, we interviewed, uh, three. Three, three auditing firms, and the recommendation was to go with, uh, uh, Smith, RHR, Smith. For our auditor for the next three years. Based on the results of the, uh, interviews, and there's a memo in there from Megan.
Did we switch from one year to three years?
Typically, you do.
They wanted the three-year contract. We have to appoint every year.
You appoint every year, but it's typically.
The contract is for three years, so we'll have to reappoint.
I thought we had two options. We had option A for a one-year, and I'm not opposed, because I really like the guy. I just thought that I had left that meeting and had heard, oh, it's all good, we'll give him one year, because we've got the one-year op, year option, but then it changed to three. I'm not opposed to it, I just thought it was interesting.
Thinking behind it was that we'll need the three years to truly assess, um, you know, how they're performing.
I mean, I'll get back to the question I asked you, Ken, one other time, is, did, I, it's poor timing, I think, isn't it? I mean, if we knew this was gonna happen, and we were gonna go out to bids, isn't the auditing already to be, should be done by now?
No.
No, we're just starting a new year now.
No, for last, for the preceding year?
Yeah, that's done, that's done. That was done by the previous auditor.
Okay, so that was the information that I got.
Yep.
Out of the packet from the old guys, all right.
Yeah.
That one's done, but it's, it's starting the new audit.
And that firm, the previous firm had been with us for a long, ever since I've been on the select board, and for many years before that, I believe.
Something.
And, uh, uh, you know, as, as Rick says, good practice every once in a while, when you're in a relationship like that, to just see what's out there, and, and.
Were the pricing differences on there, or?
Minimal.
Minimal?
They were, I mean, there were differences, but they were not, there were not enough to sway you to one firm or another, the numbers. And I, I don't quite, I don't remember what they were.
I don't, do you remember what they were, Megan? I feel like we did pick the low bid, didn't we? The middle one? The other guy, the other new guy?
Who was the low bid? I mean, was it our previous?
Mustache.
Polia.
Yeah.
Um, and they, I mean, they were all very qualified firms, I thought. They came in and they all made reasonably good presentations.
Just went to that committee.
This firm that, that we're recommending, um, does a lot of other towns, they actually helped Camden out of their situation with the, with the snowball. They did the forensic audit on that.
I mean, we weren't displeased with, with our previous ones, were we?
There were some issues, um, mostly in, and Megan, you know, they did good work, let's put it that way. But they were a little less responsive than Megan would have liked in some of the dealings with them.
And one of the things I liked about this firm, and you kind of got to walk that fine line about what, what does a larger organization mean? But the depth of bench, for using that term, of our previous auditing firm was nowhere near as deep as the bench of this firm. So when Megan maybe had an issue or something, it was difficult to get stuff in a timely manner, which ended up being one of the questions we asked everyone, is, how's your policy on return on emails? And one of the things I liked about this firm is, is, I can't think of a time, unless you call them at one o'clock in the morning, where you're not gonna have someone there to answer a question. And I can, if you want me to keep chatting them up, one of the things that I liked, they're very aggressive, but aggressive in a good way. Like, how can Megan get, what's the rating that you're trying to get? She's trying to get this awesome certification. Their clients are all the people that have this certification. He knew exactly what Megan was talking about, uh, knew exactly the things that she should hit to try to get this, uh, award. And then could speak to us about how this benefits the town, because, like Rick said, when we were interviewing some of these folks, finance isn't the super fun sexy stuff. It's not a public works project that has good prominence to it. So sell me on why this stuff is important at all, and he starts talking about getting money for cheaper, uh, grant opportunities. This award that Megan's been working on for some time, and he's confident he can get us there, really does open up financial doors for us. Um, and Megan's already been picking away at it at full steam.
We've submitted, right?
I've submitted the 2018 budget for the year.
Um, one of the other things that, in my opinion, and Megan seemed to back me up on it, that, that sets this firm apart, they already have an online portal. So any information that Megan gives to them to physically hold on to, which is current practice with our current auditor. Whereas with our current auditor, she would have to request that they send that information to her, and then we have to wait for a physical copy. With this new firm, she can go right into the online portal, use your username and password, have access to any information that we've given them, real-time updates. And they're gonna have this cool forum board, where if Megan's sitting there going, I have an issue with Trio and importing this thing into it. She may not even have to call the auditors, she can post it on this board, which every one of their members in here has access to. And someone from the town of Canton might say, oh yeah, I had that same issue, and this is how I resolved it, all within a chat forum. And we've never really spent any additional money, and Megan got her problem fixed.
So, in looking at that, audit prices will not exceed on page 25. Are the dates right? Option one, audit year June 30th, 217, 2017?
Yeah.
Right.
Because last fiscal year would just end it.
Yeah.
Right, but that's already done, correct?
No, that, the fiscal year is finished, the auditing process would just begin.
Well, that's where I was going back to with the poor timing thing. I mean, shouldn't we have already done this, so somebody would be in place come July 1st, instead of now?
No, not necessarily. Because the work is, I mean, last year, the audit for fiscal year ending 2016, we didn't get until April of this year, which was far too late.
There again, I mean.
Uh, but this time, we, in fact, we put it in the bid, that was in the bid package, they have to have that audit to us by December 31st.
Right.
That's, that's in the contract, and that'll be way earlier than we got it last year.
And way earlier than we.
And they, we asked every one of the who had said this, do you have any problem with this timing, and they said no.
And Megan had great chit chats back and forth with them, and because they speak that same financial language, um, they walked through, with every person that we talked with, they, we walked through. Especially with the two new vendors, or potential new vendors, what would our first year setup look like? And they were able to rattle off real quick, once you approve us, send us these documents, we can get you started up and running. And they're gonna ground proof stuff, they're gonna send a team in to work with Megan, to build the relationship, and they're ready to build this stuff out as soon as we approve this contract. Megan will start sending them information, and they'll build out our portfolio.
I guess my only comment would be that, while I respect the work that the committee did, and I, I think that's very appropriate. Uh, the main municipal association does make clear that it's the select board that should be the one doing the selecting. And I guess I would have appreciated a list of potential, um, people we were interviewing, you know, just to see who they were, and, um, you know, if I knew anything that I could contribute to the committee, so.
How did we publicize that? Because we only got three responses, our current auditor, and then two new ones. You published it the same way that.
We posted it on the MMA website, and then we sent it out to auditing firms.
Well, yeah, our paper.
Right.
It's the same as if we were bidding for payment or something.
But we also, we also sent it to auditing firms, sent a list, you know, the RFQ out to auditing, auditing firms, not relying just on the fact that they might see it in the paper, they might see it on the MMA site.
Last couple few bits, um, I talked with some folks from Camden that had worked with this firm during their forensic audit, they spoke extremely highly of them. And then the other thing that just seems interesting anyway, and I did ask them about it, they're the, the firm for Camden. And they're the firm for Midco Solid Waste Corporation, and then they would potentially become the firm for us.
I guess echoing on what Doug had said, I, I don't even remember it being an option to possibly set in on, on any type of.
I don't think we can have more than two people, because then it becomes a core.
That's where I'm getting at, is that it wasn't brought up at any time I was aware of, for somebody.
Well, typically, in these, it's the two, two members on the board would go and, and then report, that's what we're doing now, we're reporting back to you guys.
Again, it would have been nice to have some information ahead of time, but it's getting late, so I'll make a motion to appoint RHR Smith and Company as the town's auditor for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2018, and authorize the town manager to sign a three-year contract.
Second.
Is that date right, or should it be fiscal year ending 2017?
I'm just reading the memo.
I know you are, but I'm thinking. It should be 2017, yeah.
Yeah, change that to June 30th, 2017.
Okay, did we have a second?
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Before you get to the goals thing, is it possible that you could jump down to the restricting vehicle weight, so Mike can get out of here too?
Um, why should he?
Yeah, that's not a problem. Let's see, where, where are we here?
That is like one thing I did not review.
Okay, okay, that'll be item all.
I didn't review, I didn't get to this part.
What are you, what are you still waiting for, Jamie? Owen.
You can go if you want, we know, we know you want to do that, so you can take off.
Yeah.
So this item, review and approval of the restricting vehicle weight and posted ways ordinance.
It, 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 it has come to our attention that, that the way we've, that the, um, posting ordinance that we have, that we've been u, working on never was adopted and approved by the select board, I, I believe, that's the case, right, Mike?
Right, I, I had checked into it, and I believe Linda got me a thing that said it had been looked at in 74.
And, and never.
Then, so, so, so we just, we need to update this and make sure where, should we write somebody after we post our roads, and, you know, that we're doing everything the way we're supposed to be? And if it goes to court, we've done things the way it's supposed to.
That's cut and dried to me.
And this is boilerplate, boilerplate ordinance, and the select board have the authority to adopt this ordinance.
The only thing I'll throw out there is, when I'm doing my other job in Augusta, we, I believe it was passed and approved that the municipalities can, if they want to, waive certain vehicle weight posting things for Farmers Hall and Hay. And it's a case by case, i- if the municipality wants to do it, I didn't see it in here, I don't think it really matters, but it's something that I. And it's a case by case, i- if the municipality wants to do it, I didn't see it in here, I don't think it really matters, but it's something that I remember seeing in Augusta. I just didn't see it in here.
That's a load limit for the road, which is diff- I, I don't think, we're posting roads.
This, this one's for the thaw in the spring, in the spring.
And letting overweight vehicles go, but only if their farmers bringing hay to their livestock.
Right, there, there's some exceptions.
Bringing to the, oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, it was a special farmer bill.
Okay.
We do it for. If that's the state law, then it's going to supersede this anyway.
No, we'd made it contingent. It allows municipalities the ability to create this exception if they want to. But if no one's complaining about it yet, we'll take it up if someone's got an issue, if Aldemir.
Well, this actually allows for it. It, it makes a list of permits and stuff, yeah.
It has like oil trucks and, you know, sewer emergency repairs on sewer for excavation.
If it's a matter of economic necessity and not mere convenience, so.
I don't think we really much care.
But, so, how much teeth are you going to have in it? Is there something that I haven't seen?
There's money, penalties, penalties. Seven, section seven.
Section seven.
Five, six.
Civil infractions subject to a fine of not less than twenty four, two hundred and fifty and no more than a thousand.
Motion to approve restricting vehicle weight on posted ways ordinance.
Second.
Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay.
Do the citizens get a crack at this?
Nope, we can, we did it. We have the ability to do that.
You're allowed to do this.
We got the goals. Um, I passed out, um, before the meeting, revised. Tom apparently had issues with his email. So he didn't get me the goals.
Bless you, Jennifer.
An hour or so before the meeting, and so, um, I re- revised my reading. And what I did was, on the list that you have, I put down everybody's ratings, uh, where I had them. If, if some members didn't put a rating on there, and if so, I just left it blank. Doug, on yours, you scratched through things, so I put a little dash in there. And, and then I kind of went through and, and the column that says board is just my take on sort of the aggregate of everybody. Now, that's up for discussion. Uh, you don't have to agree with me on any of it, we can change it or whatever, but I tried to sort of put them in, in the order of precedence as when I compiled all the ratings. And so that's what we have there. We, as a board, need to adopt our goals and, and we set a, set a goal off. And the top two, by the way, are select board goals, so those are sort of separate. The handbook for committees and the increased civic engagement issues, those are goals that we would, as a select board, would set ourselves to accomplish. The rest of them really require significant input from the town staff. And so, like I say, that column is, you can kind of see what I did there is, you know, if there was, the, the ones that came to the top, came to the top fairly clearly.
It is interesting how much consensus there actually emerges.
Yeah.
Well, especially when Ken and Mark don't follow the rules and do five to, four top priorities when you're only supposed to do three top priorities.
Well, I did, I did one for the select board goals.
Oh, okay.
Everybody, everybody bent the rules a little bit, except Owen didn't. Owen didn't bend the rules.
You know, when I was thinking, I said that you, you might get more, you might get more consistency with the very worthy amongst us than you with the top priority. And it sort of turned out that way when you look at the.
But we ended up with, or at least my column shows three top priorities, six very worthy, and then all the rest worthy, except the zero-based budgeting didn't get a lot of support. Under notes, I, the road ord- acceptance ordinance, I'll, I'll float that when we do the O R C session and we'll see where that goes. So I didn't, I ranked it as just worthy, but knowing that I will do that with it and see where that goes, but.
So we all good with the three top priorities? We can kind of call those ones good. Anyone have major issues with those?
I think they look good. I mean, the first two were easy for me, which was the library and the comp plan. Then I had a little trouble coming up with the third one, because there were a lot of really good ones here. And I came down to the idea, said, well, what do I, when I finish my term on the select board, what do I really want to have accomplished? And it came to that, I really want that capital improvement plan to be integrated with the annual budget process. And so that was, that's how I came to my third top priority goal decision on that one.
With the, uh, comp plan one, the only reason I did very worthy is because it's a two-year thing.
Right, and I put that in the, in the comments there, so.
It's just, next year bumps up a notch, you know.
Right. Um, and so I think that, that leaves us where we are. And, um, I think the idea in general would be that we would expect the top priority goals to, to be just that and to be what Rick spends most of his, or a good chunk of his time on, the very worthy ones. You know, we would expect significant progress on those, and then the worthy ones sort of as, as time permits.
Do we have to cut a very worthy down to a worthy?
Nope.
Based on your rules?
I said five or six.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, I did. And it allowed me to, it allowed me to say, well, if it got, if it got at least two very worthy votes, then it was a very worthy goal. All, all the worthy ones had no more than one very worthy vote.
Now, Rick, we're in the clouds right now, because this is just one sheet of paper. What do you think?
I think, I.
Is this a, is this a crazy list for you?
No, I don't, I don't think it is. I think, um, I, I don't think it is.
Well, I, I think it came out of a really good discussion at the workshop. I think, uh, the exercise of having everybody do it individually is, is always useful, because you can do it on your own and then, and then you compile it and you, and you end up with something, so.
I, I think we have a goo- I, I think it's a good plan to, to start, start picking away at.
And we'll save these and, and evaluate.
I'm happy with that.
Is there anything else you'd like to add to that list of three, or? No, I take that as a no.
To this?
No.
And I, I ranked them within the things too, like for example, the top, the, the top very worthy one is the beautification program, which got two top priority votes. And then I sort of worked my way down. So these are, are in rough order as to what I thought was the board priority. So is everybody okay with moving forward with these? I don't know that we necessarily need a motion, but.
Let them happen.
Make it so. As Commander Kirk used to say.
But just because, and I, I'll try not to spend too much time on it, but the advanced route one sewer expansion. Now, I said defer on that, but that was because I feel like I've always been a little deficient on what exactly the plan is. And I only said defer, not because we don't want to expand our, our wastewater, but considering all the other stuff. And, you know, when we did the last expansion, how many users did we add to our network for how many dollars did we spend?
Well, and I think everybody, nobody ranked that one particularly high. Now, granted, many of us did our rankings probably before the workshop we had on that.
It was sort of my understanding, doesn't that go ahead?
I mean, I think we sort of decide, yeah, it's a little bit at a time, but it's, you know, but I think by doing this, we say, okay, well, you know, we're more concerned with, for just to pick one, holding a business form for Rockport businesses than we are with this. The sewer is a slow process, it's going to take some time. And it's not like we're asking Rick to, okay, go, go whole hog at it and get it done this year.
Yeah, you're, you're looking at something that's a three to five-year plan.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
So I think we're, we're good.
Another thing I'll throw out there, when I was with the pathways committee and we were working up our goals and ranking them, one thing that was interesting was we put a little caveat in there that said, this committee remains flexible. So if, I mean, you got a massive, a decent grant to do that sewer extension. And so, I just throw it out there as far as I like to be nimble, and if all of a sudden a grant presents itself where we can get a one-to-one match for expanding sewer. Well, then, shoot, that might jump up as far as priorities, but right now, where we would be footing the bill completely ourselves, it just didn't seem like the right time to do it. But I throw that out there because we had some board members on previous boards where something would come to light, it seemed like a great opportunity. We jumped right on it, but because we didn't necessarily follow certain procedural things, there was resistance to it. But that's just something, that's a me thing. If an opportunity presents itself, that bumps priorities up for me, but.
And I will send this in electronic form to everybody.
Great, thank you.
So that, especially Rick, so he can put it up on his.
Under the topic of maintaining a positive employee culture, I'd like to look up at the clock and thank Linda for sitting there without complaint and, uh, I appreciate that.
She fell asleep an hour ago.
I was going to ask if you would also bump up the adjournment.
Changing the agenda, yeah, okay. Okay, well, so we're done with that, okay. Item P is, uh, consider appointing representative select board to serve on the MS eighty-two-eight middle school building committee. We had a communication from a citizen who was concerned that the building committee included a Camden select board member but not a Rockport select board member. I was actually okay with that, because the building is in Camden, so they have some other issues to come up. But at any rate, we did reach out to Maria Libby and she told us, well, if the Rockport select board wants to have a Rockport, have a member on the committee, they would be happy to have that member. But they do need to understand that it's a fairly significant time commitment. We do have Rockport residents serving on the building committee. In fact, I think Will Gartley is the chair. Anastasia Fisher, I believe, is on it.
Did Will stay on? I felt like I didn't see him.
Yeah, he, he's.
He still stayed on, because it's a new, it's a new committee now.
As far as I know, he's still on the, he's on his chair.
Okay, cool.
And, uh, so we do have, Rockport does have representation on the committee. It's a question of, among this board, does this board want to have a representative on the committee and is somebody willing to step forward and, and take the time to do that?
I'll step back. This is where you go, not it, not it, not it.
I think we're already well represented, aren't we?
Well, I'll, I'll throw it out there. So I was on that, the, the school board, or the school building committee from.
Visioning committee, they call it.
The visioning committee from the beginning of last year, up and through the November election. And then I notified the board that because I did get elected, I would be stepping down from that. And then threw it out to this previous board that if someone wanted to replace me, they're going to continue to do some work. Because I didn't push hard to get a replacement from November until now, we hadn't, or from November until the, the vote, the bond vote, we didn't have a member on there. I am happy to serve on that, uh, because I had been on the visioning committee, I'm relatively familiar with the, the bits and pieces of it. That said, if someone else has a desire to get on that committee at all, because they've got so much free time, like we all do.
Well, I, and I also think that I, I'm going to strongly say no. It would, it would put me in a conflictual situation.
Yeah, that's what I would think would be difficult for you.
But you don't work for that school.
Well, I think you've got to volunteer, Ken, so.
Yeah.
Tally-o.
Tally-o.
So do we have, so, I have a motion, I think, to appoint Owen. Does anybody second that?
I second that.
Okay, I'm going to vote against you just to make you feel.
Any further discussion? All in favor of Owen? All opposed? Five to nothing vote.
Make us proud, yeah.
I will. Tax dollars coming down.
Okay.
I move to point Jamie Frank Amano from the.
No, just, just leave that.
Did I just jump it? Did I jump the gun here?
Yeah. No, just go ahead, just strike the from the select.
Okay. I move to appoint Jamie Frank Romano to serve on the board of the Midcoast Regional Planning Commission with apparently no starting or ending date.
Second.
Jamie has said he's willing to do this. If a board member wanted to do it, they certainly could step in, but I think Jamie is the right one to do it.
No, to give him a starting date and no ending date.
I think those appointments, they may not necessarily be time limited, I'm not sure. But at any rate, okay, all in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Okay. And now we move on to the MMA annual election. We need to vote for this. This is, uh, vice president and executive committee members. There are the same number of people running as there are positions. And so unless anybody, Rick, do you know any of these people?
Oh, yes, uh, they're both, um.
Mary Sabans.
Yeah, she's, she's currently a member of the executive committee, uh, along with me, and, um, Jim Bennett has been on there. He's the, um, um, uh, city manager in, for the city of Bit- Bitterford. He was a member of the, uh, executive committee, um, previously and is going back on. I don't know Jill Dustin, uh, but I do know, uh, Gary. He is currently on the executive committee now, um, from the city of Elsworth.
Okay. You have any concerns about any of them?
No.
Concerns about this guy. Worshipful master.
Okay, I await a motion.
Weird Mason terms. Uh, I move to approve all members on the voting ballot for the Maine Municipal Association.
What would happen if there was no second or no motion?
Then there would be no action.
Okay. I mean, I'll be honest, I don't know any of these people.
And you wouldn't.
We have a vote as a town, as a member of the association, we have a vote on this, and, uh, I know I'm taking Rick's, Rick's name. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I sit on this executive committee also.
Yeah. Do we have a second?
I trust you.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
No pressure.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
So just so you know, MMA, when they come to the main state legislature, they advocate really hard for municipalities. They, in my opinion anyway, really try to fulfill out, anytime they see something that's an extra burden on a, on a municipality and the state's not thinking about it, they make sure we know about it.
And Doug, how many members are there? Four hundred and ninety? Wasn't that our quiz question?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we need to go into his wastewater commissioners.
I move, we leave a select board and enter as wastewater commissioners.
All in favor? None opposed, okay. Uh, we have the July commitment and the August commitment.
Anything weird? Should we have the numbers up?
Well, one said June.
Anything weird, Ken?
I don't think so.
Or, or Rick, or, do we have any people that are way out?
Nope, nothing that Megan pointed out to me. Kind of the norm.
Kind of interesting that we're having looked at this before.
You learn all about your neighbors, whether they pay their sewer bill or not.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Yeah, typically, there are some users who let it go for a couple of months and then pay it, especially the commercial users. And some of them have agreements to pay in a certain way, shape or form, or something like that, but.
Why is it, isn't it interesting on page eight, you've got one, two, three, four folks at Patterson Park, all with the exact same water bill amount. Is that normal?
Well, it's probably, a lot of it is the equivalent user fee, which is a set amount.
Right.
And then, you know, depends on how much.
And they may not reach the maximum amount of water.
Okay, I just thought it was interesting, because you've got one person in Patterson, it's down to forty-nine dollars, but then you've got these string of identical numbers. Whatever, just throwing it up there.
And which, are the numbers higher or lower?
Well, they're all a hundred and fifteen, thirty, a hundred and fifteen, thirty, a hundred and fifteen, thirty. Hundred and fifteen, thirty.
But then a lot of the other ones are equal too, you know, two twenty-five, two twenty-five, two twenty-five.
Yeah.
I wonder if they meter the, them individually, or does he just assign them?
Well, and I maybe purposely identified that string there. Heard some concerns about.
You want to track it down for us?
I, I, I've just heard some concerns that maybe, maybe these get manipulated a little bit on the back end. But I can neither confirm nor deny that, but anyway.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to commit the July commitment of sewer user debt fees for the period of May twenty-seventeen, totaling twenty-six thousand, two hundred eighty-four dollars, eighty-three cents to the treasurer for collection.
Second.
Uh, moved and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? No. Okay, that passes five to nothing. Next one?
Motion to commit the August commitment of sewer user debt fees for the period of June twenty-seventeen, totaling ninety-four thousand, six hundred five dollars, eighteen cents to the treasurer for collection.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor? None opposed?
I move to exit.
We're good, right?
Exit as wastewater commissioners and go back into select board.
A second.
All in favor? Opposed, okay, we're back as select board liaison reports.
Just the harbor committee, and it was a surprisingly contentious meeting regarding the forty, the fifty-foot boat and the forty-foot slot. The, the feelings ran very strongly on the committee.
So in your opinion, it is not unanimously supported, there's lots of friction.
No, the overall, the overall impression is definitely negative. And like I say, I just get the feeling that the harbor committee in some ways is just looking for the path of least resistance to get this behind them, so.
Okay, anybody else liaison reports?
Pathways is gonna do the ribbon cutting for the high sidewalk, date to be determined. But then there's also some activity over Erickson Field Preserve. I, I want to expand on it, but because I missed the last meeting, cause I was at the legislature.
They've reached their fundraising goals.
They did, and so now they're gonna act and they're gonna try to connect that from Erickson Field Preserve, where they already have the walking trail, exercise trail, and they're gonna go, because they own that property, and then they're gonna poke out on Beach Hill Road at the base of Beach Hill and tie into that hiking trail that goes up and then down to Rockville. So you'll be able to go from Route ninety-eight Erickson Field all the way to Rockville Street.
That's super.
Yeah. My understanding is they started clearing the trails today.
Yeah, one of the perks about.
Put the dirt in tomorrow.
When you own the equipment and you own the land and you're not asking for a grant or anything, they can just start making trails, and they make trails quick and they make nice trails. Let's see, my other committee is recreation. I think that we're still trying to figure out the best relationship between the rec committee, the youth leagues, and the town. I went with Rick and Mike Young and Bob Hop, who's the maintenance guy for Marge Jones, to talk about the complex. We, where are we at with that irrigation on that dry field?
Oh.
Cause we've got some really cool things.
Assumption is that it got fixed, cause Mike had called them to come fix it.
We've got irrigation through all of those fields, never really needed to use them, because it was never this dry. The irrigation on one of the fields, we got up and running, because it was an easy thing to do, that field's doing great. One of the other fields, it was starting to dry out, so we reached out to Farley, they should've gotten it reconnected, and this is not.
Well, what happened was somebody turn, somebody.
They turned off the hand valve or something.
Somebody turned off the hand valve, and when they, and, and then when Farley went to turn it back on, it was broken.
No.
So they had to replace that valve. My assumption is that it's fixed. I'll check with Mike tomorrow.
This is in preparation for soccer, so baseball's over, but they use the outfield for soccer, so we're trying to get those good. Rick and Mike did a great job, there were a bunch of weeds growing out of the tennis court, or I'm sorry, the basketball court. There are also weeds growing out of the tennis court, but in a relatively quick way. They had someone come out and burn out all the grasses and then do this nifty airplane sealer stuff. I went and took a look at it, it looks really good, and the tennis courts will be done at some point.
Yeah, Mike is getting a price and that, that will come back to you guys for approval, because it has to come out of the reserve and if it's more than five thousand dollars, it has to.
Only thing I wish is that they had also burnt the weeds at the tennis court to minimize the expansion there, but hey, the basketball courts look great. And, oh, from someone who sits on committees, they said to no one in particular on this board, go to your committees, go to your committees and liaison with them, because that's really good stuff. Like, I'm the strongest advocate for pathways here, yes, because I love pathways, but also because I go to pathways meetings and they convince me that their stuff is awesome and we collaborate on how I'm gonna pitch their stuff to the board. So, you know, don't undervalue how much you learn from these committees and how much you bring to the board way above and beyond what could be had by just reading minutes, even super comprehensive minutes.
That would be the first start though, is to get all of us minutes, so we can at least see what's, what's being talked about or not.
Minutes are an output. If you're at the meeting, you provide input. And I'm not saying, I'm not saying that meetings, meeting minutes aren't a bad, aren't, aren't a good thing to have.
They're excellent.
They're an excellent thing to have, but you can't sway the conversation one way or the other or inform folks about what's reasonable for the board to consider or not. Cause people throw out interesting random ideas and then you have to be the voice of reason to say, we don't have money to do that. But if you go in this direction and you come up with a plan and you find some matching funds or whatever, the board will be a lot more conducive. And then that committee hasn't wasted their time running down rabbit's hole of, of no good reason.
I will see Dave Jackson tomorrow or Wednesday and ask him to make contact with Abby with regards to the placement and types of benches.
And potentially helping develop policy.
Yep, and that was the last one I met with, I didn't meet with the capital improvement, wasn't in the area. And the ambulance one is coming up in the future.
I have nothing to report.
ZBA met, they elected a new chair, George Benson, they had a, a special exception hearing, which went for a long time and I actually wasn't able to stay for the whole thing, but they were dealing with a boat repair shop on, what the heck's the name of that street?
Uh, Gold's.
No, no, it's the one that, the one that goes off Camden St- uh, off Union Street over to Camden Street. Grove Street, yeah, corner of Grove Street and Union Street, there's a piece of property there that gentleman wants to buy and build a, a small boat repair shop. It's, the boat repair shop is not permitted in that zone, but a tradesman shop is, but by special exception, and so there was fairly, there were some people who were not in favor of it.
Is that the place where he's been parking his boat forever on the right-hand side going towards?
I don't think so, because that property right now is not cleared.
No.
Are we talking right across from Paws, the dog park?
No, 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 no.
Not Paws, but the dog park?
No, it's, it's right near you, it's the, right on the corner of Union Street, on Grove Street. It's right across from that trailer house that's there, the, the mobile home.
Oh.
Oh.
There's a boat in that yard, I think. There, there is a boat in that yard, I was thinking, it's across from that.
That process, or the.
The concept.
Yeah, yeah, there were some people who were not in favor of it and, and, but the zoning board went through the process and they put several conditions on it, like you could only have, you know, one or two boats, you could never have stuff outside and, and there were a lot of conditions put on, and I believe they also had, ended up having to go to the planning board. One of the conditions was to go for a site plan review, which they were not otherwise required to do.
Yeah, and I, again, I would just make this plea, that we need to have a way to get minutes of these committees.
Those minutes should be available on, on the website, I think.
But it's, yeah, but we need an easy way for us to, you know, have this included in a packet or something, so we can look at it. It, you know, for me to go chasing around the website, trying to track down minutes that are three months old, some are one month old, I think it's just an abrogation of our responsibility.
Cemetery has not met, we need to do that soon, we're way overdue for that. Yeah, I know. And I'm trying to remember if any other committees, I think that's it for me. So, there is a packet of stuff going around to make sure we sign, and other than that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Well, I'm not done doing official business here yet.
You don't have to, yeah, you sign whenever.
Have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Longest time for a second ever. Let the record state, somebody's got nothing better to do.
Just say.